All right, welcome, everybody.
Okay.
I'm going to call the January 27th meeting of the Planning Board to order. Peter Brits, the Acting Planning Director, and for the first order of business, I would make a motion for election of officers, take a motion of election of officers, right here. Motion.
I would like to make a motion that we elect Corey Clark as chairman and Rick Chellman as vice chair.
Do we have a second?
And I'll speak to that if I'm allowed. I would like to just state a few words that I have formulated. Corey Clark joined the Planning Board in June 2017 as an alternate member, and he was then reappointed and promoted to full-time voting member last year by the former mayor, Rick Bexstedt. As the chief engineering and construction engineer in the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Mr. Clark has the skills and the background needed to chair the Planning Board moving forward. In his time on the Planning Board, Mr. Clark has demonstrated that he has the ability and experience to support the many new members on the Planning Board. His ability to listen and thoughtfully respond to questions of fellow board members has shown me he is ready for this new role, and if you vote for him tonight, he will prove that to everyone. Rick Chellman joined the Planning Board almost a year ago. Although his tenure has not been very long, he has shown himself to be knowledgeable in board matters and would be a good and supportive vice chair. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to, do I press this thing right?
You don't have to press it, you just have to talk near it.
To be pressed, it needs to.
I would just like to say that it's actually very difficult for me to vote on this. I'm brand-new, this is my first night, I don't know all of the people on the Planning Board, and I feel like there needs to be a better process around us having a chance to share our bios with each other, get a chance of who wants to be a chair and a vice chair, and have that kind of, like, informed discussion, which I can't have at this moment. So, I just wanted to state that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Can we add an additional nomination for chair?
We have a motion on the floor, so we'll have to deal with that motion and then move on to the next motion. So, any other discussion? If there's no others, question, I'm going to have to call the question with a roll-call vote because we have a Planning Board member who's attending via Zoom. And, so, I have a list here of members. I'm, oh, oh, did he want to add to the discussion? I'm sorry. Mr. Hewitt, would you like to add to the discussion before we take the vote?
No, I'm all set for the vote.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll-call vote, so all those in favor say aye, and we'll start with Peter Harris.
Nay.
Nay, okay. Rick Chellman?
No.
Ray Pazulo?
Yes.
Karen Kennard?
Yes.
Beth Moreau?
Yes.
Corey Clark?
Yes.
Jane Begala?
No.
Greg Mahana?
No.
Okay, so that is, oh, sorry, Jim Hewitt?
No.
I'll have you on my list. Okay. Okay, so that is one, two, three, four yeses, and one, two, three, four, five noes. So, the motion fails, so I'll entertain another motion. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to make a notion that Rick Chellman be the chair and Corey Clark, sorry, I forgot, I lost my name, be vice chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahana. Any discussion on this motion? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I've been on the Planning Board for a year, actually started at the same time Rick did, and quickly learned to understand his knowledge and background to, his engineering background and knowledge of our Planning Board, other Planning Boards, how the statute works with our regulations, and it's been a very helpful experience for me in getting to know, and I feel that's helpful leadership, needed leadership, that we need going forward.
Anybody else like to speak to that motion? Oh, Mr. Harris, did your hand raised?
You mean, Mr. Hewitt?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hewitt, excuse me, sorry.
That was Mr. Harris.
I'm sorry, is my hand being shown raised?
It is now.
It is, but, that's okay, we can, just want to make sure we don't-
All right, I'm just new to this Zoom stuff, I'm sorry, but is my hand being shown up or down right now?
It is being shown raised, I think we have to lower it, I think that the producer can do that, but if you're not getting right-
I'm going to lower it, so it should be lowered now.
We'll try to keep an eye on it, it's a long way from us to C2, so just speak up if you have something to say too, if we don't see your hand.
Right. Okay, my hand should be down right now.
Yep, okay. Okay, anybody else? All right, then I'll call the question. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
No.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
So, I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, and, oh, sorry, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes.
Good thing I'm not the chair. Okay. So, we have, it looks like we have a new chair and vice chair. Congratulations. So, I'm going to pass the gavel, because that was my only official duty in terms of chair tonight, to Mr. Chellman. Would you like to sit here?
Do you want to move?
This is, or I can pass this over to you, it doesn't make any difference, I'll just stay here.
Yep.
Doesn't matter.
They're supposed to sit near the panic button. Now, you're going to have to press it.
I'm going to have to press it.
Thank you, and despite the fact that that was not an immediate vote, I think we're all going to be working well together, and I did speak to Corey earlier, and I look forward to working with him as vice chair, and of course, the rest of the board members as well. So, I believe we have the minutes to review first, from the last two meetings, where not all the members tonight were present. I don't know if any of you reviewed the videos or have comments based on that. We're ready for comments.
First, we need a motion, so how about I make a motion to approve the minutes from the December meeting?
Second.
Moreau motion, Corey with a second. Any discussion? I'll just note that purview is one word with a U after the P. Other than that, I didn't see anything. So, we have a motion second to approve the minutes for both meetings. Beth, was that your motion for both?
Yes, all December meetings.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, all votes need to be by roll-call because we have a member on December.
I'm sorry, that's all right.
Want me to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, this is a vote for both December 16th and December 30th minutes. Mr. Hewitt?
I abstain.
Was that an I?
I abstain.
Abstain, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
Ms. Kennard?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard, sorry.
That's right, that's right.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
I abstain.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
And Mr. Hewitt abstained. Okay, so that motion passes.
Thank you. We have a request to postpone, request of Monarch Village LLC applicant for behalf of Navisha Hospitality LLC for property of 3548 Lafayette Road.
Mr. Chairman, we may have a subdivision review first.
It looks like the subdivision is first, and actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could call your attention to a letter, I don't know if you want to go through the postponements first for people that might be here for applications, but-
You have to pull those out of order in a vote.
Usually, I have to pull them out of order, it's up to you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We had, we got a late letter from 77 Meredith, and then we also have the request to postpone on 3400 Lafayette Road, 325 Little Harbor for the wetland conditional use permit, and 3858 Lafayette Road.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to suspend the rules to, a vote to postpone all of those items?
Pull those out.
Can we do that?
We would need that, yes.
As a group vote?
Yeah.
All right, I would make that motion.
Second.
Let me just correct it, I said it should be 3548 Lafayette Road.
We'd need a roll-call vote, unfortunately.
Yep.
Sorry, Peter.
I know. So, let me just clarify, this is a motion to postpone 77 Meredith, this is the Monarch Village or 3548 Lafayette Road, 3400 Lafayette Road, and I thought there was one more. That's it, okay. 325 Little Harbor Road, wetland conditional use permit. Okay, so I'm going to take a roll-call vote. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, motion passes.
Okay, now we are back to determination of completeness of subdivision review, is that correct?
Actually, now, our motion was, that roll-call was just to suspend the rules, which we had to do.
You're right.
And now, we need the motion to actually, sorry.
Postpone.
Postpone the ones that he mentioned, and we take a roll-call vote of that, then we can move on. Sorry.
So, now the vote is to postpone those meetings after we took it out of order, so I'm going to take a second roll-call vote. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard?
Yes.
City Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Okay.
Move on.
Now, are we ready for determination of completeness, subdivision review, which I believe is the next item on the agenda? Request for Austin Repair Renovation LLC for property at 27 Shaw Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we vote to determine that the application is complete according to our subdivision rules and regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll-call vote?
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
I believe the next item is Sagamore Creek LLC, property at 960 Sagamore Island, requesting site plan approval.
I'd make a motion that we vote to determine that the application is complete according to the Site Plan Review Regulations. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll-call vote?
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chellman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Oh, I got Mr. Hewitt, okay, it's unanimous?
Around a 4C?
C, yeah.
4C.
Chupacarín's old business.
We're now on to the request of Gregory Moreau and Amanda Moreau, owners, and Daryl Moreau applicant for property at 137 Northwest Street, requesting a wetlands conditional use permit under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance to impact 5,062 square feet of wetland buffer and 45 square feet of tidal wetland. Proposed new home and existing turnaround is partially in 100-foot tidal buffer zone in North Mill Pond. In addition to the new home, the applicant is proposing to remove an existing gravel turnaround and install a new paved parking apron for city vehicles to turn around. This new turnaround is the city pump station, and the city pump station are all within a new easement. In addition, there is plans to upgrade the stormwater outfall to protect against erosion. Property shown on Assessor's Map 122, Lot 2, and lies in the general residence, GRA District, and Historic District. Who is here to speak in favor of this application?
If I might just say one thing before it starts, in case anyone wonders, I am not in any way, do I even know Daryl Moreau, or am I related to him, just in case anyone wonders, since we have the same last name? I just want to make that part of the record. Never met him, don't know him, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, John Shagnan from Ambid Engineering, representing the applicant here tonight, who is with us. Also, Tim Phoenix from Hopeful Phoenix, Gormley and Roberts, is here on his behalf also. I don't know if we're going to get the plans up on the board, but we did appear at the December meeting to the board, and owing to the fact that this board has a lot of new members, I guess I'll go through and go through the plan set and make a presentation sort of from the start, and then we can go over what happened last month and move on. So, the project is on Northwest Street, there was a long, skinny lot on the left as you came down Northwest Street, and the application, next page, included a subdivision of that lot. So, the first set, the first plan in the plan set is the subdivision plan, it shows the existing house on the west end, Northwest Street is on the south, and the bypass is on the north. On the west end, there's an existing structure, and that structure is going to remain on the lot to the west. Then, traveling east, there's a section of that lot that is in a dedicated easement. The city, when the bypass bridge was being reconstructed, took an opportunity to put in a water main connection that looped and went under the property, so they secured an easement for that. Then, close to that easement is the property line separating the two lots. The lot on the east side is predominantly vacant, but there is a city sewer pump station at the west end of that lot, and a gravel turnaround of that has sort of grown in, as it's sort of shown up over time as a convenience, and it is entirely on the applicant's property. So, this plan shows the creation of, as a part of the subdivision, an easement, permanent easement, that, it's detailed here in the blow-up, that's the water line easement in the blow-up, the area of the pump station easement is shown in detail on the bottom. So, there's an area that is dedicated to the maintenance of that station, and then, due to the turnaround, the gravel turnaround being eliminated, the city requested and the applicant agreed to create a turnaround easement, so that will allow for the continued use of their property as a turnaround, albeit in a different configuration. The plan shows a proposed turnout, so that, being a dead end, it allows for city maintenance of the road as far as snow plowing goes, they have a place to turn around and maintains that function. The next sheet is the existing conditions plan, that shows you the topography, the site is adjacent to Northwest Street, and on the south side of Northwest Street, the North Mill Pond is present. So, the site has proximity to that resource, that's why we're here for conditional use permit, as the 100-foot buffer line is in this location as shown on the plan. Generally, the topography comes from the bypass, which is higher in elevation than this lot. You can see the bypass slope here, holding up the road, but then the lot generally slopes from west to east, going down in elevation. Currently, there is a catch basin and piped outfall directly to the Mill Pond that handles runoff in that lower eastern section of Northwest Street. The next sheet in the set is a subdivision site plan, and as a part of the subdivision of the lot, the applicant wanted to show, and throughout this process of subdivision, they included potential development on the subdivided lot. And this plan shows in detail the Lot 2 development, which is going to consist of a single-family residence and the removal of the gravel turnaround, replacing with a paved turnout, and some buffer plantings in that area. The project went to the Portsmouth Board of Adjustment for a number of variances, one being the lot width, so there was a, because the lot is long and skinny, they needed a variance because you have a requirement for 100-foot lot depth, that variance was granted, and also, there were variances that were granted for the placement of the house on that lot, specifically a three-foot front yard and a six-and-a-half-foot rear yard. The next sheet shows erosion control and grading, so this does highlight the 100-foot tidal buffer, which is the impact in there, require a conditional use permit, which is what we're here tonight for, shows the setbacks to the structure over 80 feet, it shows the grading that will be accomplished. Not much change here on the area that's going to be replaced back to a natural state, some grading here to accommodate the level house that's being constructed, so some grading to get back down to the grade, it shows some grading at the entrance stairs and the driveway. The next sheet shows, and that sheet also showed the erosion control measures, the silt fence, silt sock, other necessary requirements. This is the utility plan, the site is on a city street which has utilities, so there's a sewer line in the street, there's a water line in the street, there's overhead electric in the street, all existing now, and this shows the service connections to the building. The next sheet is the conditional use permit plan, and I think, unless there is a question about the, what we're proposing here in the general sense, I would like to go back to a presentation about the conditional use permit. As I mentioned, we were here in November, November 18th, we appeared before the board, and at that meeting, the subdivision approval was granted, so the lot has received Planning Board approval and is subdivided. The Planning Board at that meeting had some concerns and questions and suggestions, and we're here tonight, having made some revisions to the plan to address those. The application actually has been revised over time, it started out with an impervious impact of about 1,600-plus square feet, that was reduced by moving the garage to the west side of the house to about 1,400 square feet, and the current plan shows an impact of only 978 square feet of impervious surface. The structure was moved further to the west, another 18 feet, to reduce the impact at, as a result of feedback from the Planning Board. The most important part of that ability to do that change was turning the garage doors to the front along Northwest Street, that was a good suggestion. Previously, the doors were on the west side, and there was need for turning movements and avoidance of a telephone pole and some fire hydrant, so moving that allowed us to push the structure 18 feet to the west. It helped reduce the impervious surface overall because we didn't need to have additional pavement on that east side to access the garage. In addition, the applicant agreed to reduce the width of the building, so we couldn't push it to the west without making the building skinnier, and the applicant agreed to make the building skinnier. So, we also made some changes to the plan that was desired previously to get to where we are tonight. As you know, the conditional use permit process requires that we meet the criteria contained in the Portsmouth zoning ordinance, so I'm going to go through that and discuss the criteria and how this project meets the criteria. The first is that the land is reasonably suited to the proposed use. So, this use, being a single-family residence, is in a residential zone. The street that fronts the lot has the required utilities to serve the proposed residence, and our plans show how the placement and grading of this proposed house will work with the land. Next criteria is that there is no location outside of the wetland buffer that is feasible or reasonable. The lot narrows as you go to the west, and the placement of the structure currently shown is as far west as possible, given the setback relief granted by the ZBA. The ZBA granted relief for a three-foot front yard and a six-and-a-half-foot rear yard. We are showing a revised garage that is 22 feet deep, which is the minimum standard garage size, and that has been placed where the three-foot and the six-and-a-half-foot distances meet, so it is impossible to move it anymore to the west and have that reasonably-sized garage, which is actually small. The majority of the structure, as you can see by the blue, this is the part of the structure that is in the 100-foot buffer, and the white is the part of the structure that is out of the buffer, the majority of the structure is located outside of the wetland buffer, so we would submit that there is no location that we can move this to be further outside the buffer. The next criteria is that there will be no adverse impacts on the wetland functions and values and surrounding properties. The plan that we're proposing is going to remove about 2,000 square feet of existing gravel from the wetland buffer. So, if you look at the orange on this plan, this orange is all within the buffer, it's 2,000 square feet of gravel, non-vegetated surface that will be removed from the wetland buffer and replaced with buffer plantings and soil. So, that is going to improve the functions and values of the adjacent resource, being the North Mill Pond, which is what we're trying to protect and what we're talking about here when we talk about functions and values. Additionally, the project is proposing at the applicant's expense to improve the outfall from this catch basin that drains the north side of the road. Currently, that outfall is experiencing some erosion, it's- It's eroding right at the salt marsh edge. And what we're proposing to do, it's also cut back the bank. And we're proposing to cut back the pipe to meet the bank and shore up the area where the water comes out of the pipe so that erosion problem will be, will cease to exist. So that's going to improve the functions and values of the site as it relates to the wetland, because currently, it's eroding salt marsh. The next criteria is that the alteration of the natural vegetative state will occur only to the extent necessary to achieve the goals. And the alteration of the natural vegetative state. Is that a hard stop or something?
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
The, so it's kind of the reverse here, actually. You know, the vegetative state is being altered to come back to vegetation. There's limited grading on this side. So we've designed the way the structure fits the topography so that we don't have a lot of grading outside the edge of the house. There's a limited amount of tree, and it's actually very impacted by invasives. But there's a very limited amount of vegetation that will be removed. And we've designed this so we only are removing what is necessary to be able to place the house on the site. The next criteria is that the alternative is the alternative with the least impact to the environment. And if we could go to the next sheet, that helps to show that this alternative is going to be an improvement to the buffer. And we're not talking about an impact to the resource. We're talking about impacts in the buffer. You are allowed to approve impacts to the buffer as a part of a conditional use permit application. You are allowed to approve them. And the criteria that we're talking about is the balancing act between what the applicant wishes to do on the property and what you can allow without impacting the resource. So I would say that if you look at this plan, and you can see the mill pond comes up, it comes very close to an existing paved public street, sewer pump station, and gravel area. The gravel area is going to be restored to its natural vegetative state. That's going to provide for filtration and treatment of runoff coming down the slopes before it gets to the resource. If you look at the placement of the house, it is behind a structure that is much closer to the resource. And there's another structure here, which is being remodeled, that got permits to be remodeled, that is much closer to the resource. There are docks in the resource. I would submit that this project has no impact to the resource and is the least impacting alternative, given placing the house on the subdivided lot. Certainly going to be better than that existing situation. And the last criteria for conditional use permit grant is that any areas in the vegetated buffer strip will be returned to a natural state to the extent feasible. And this is, this is an important criteria. Not as much for this project, but when you have projects that are proposing to go into the buffer, to do some construction, put in a pipeline, et cetera, et cetera, that the buffer be restored as much as possible. In this case, we can say emphatically that, yes, we are restoring a wetland buffer, 2,000 square feet, as a part of this project, where we're asking for an impact, a permanent impact to the buffer of only 978 square feet. So on balance, we would meet that criteria also. At this point, unless you have any quick questions for me, I do want to have Attorney Phoenix make a presentation.
Any questions for John? Jane?
Yes. Could you just talk about the flood hazard?
Sure.
Of this property? Because you're talking about that area that would drain into the salt marsh better, but that's due to runoff, et cetera. What about the danger of the house to flood hazard from the tidal North Mill Pond?
Sure. So as a part of the package, or in the package, we put the flood hazard line. As you may be aware, the city did enact, changed the ordinance that takes the flood hazard line and adds two feet to that. The proposed house is outside of both the flood hazard line and the two-foot height extension. So based on those two things, the house has no bearing or impact on the flood hazard area. Does that answer the question?
Yes. And then my other question is, if you made the house smaller, you could reduce that blue section of impact to the wetland buffer, couldn't you?
Well, the criteria that we're talking about here and excuse me for a second. There's no location outside of the wetland buffer that is feasible or reasonable. I think that what we're showing here is a reasonably sized structure. And it's already been made smaller a number of times through this process.
And what's a square footage of just the house?
The footprint of the house is 1,491 square feet.
It still looks bigger than the house that's on the, on the North Mill Pond side of that street between them.
You're talking about this structure here? This one?
Yeah.
That, that might visually present, but if you look at this part of the house and compare it, they're very similar in size. This picture does not depict the fact that this house traded this hard driveway for a garage. So there's now a garage structure in the buffer there. So when you look at it in that respect, I think they're very similar in size.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Merrill?
I'm just curious, Mr. Shagnon, are you going to be digging down and putting a basement in this or not?
I'll let the builder answer that question. Yeah, yeah, it's wise. Yeah, it's just going to be a crawl space.
Thank you.
I have one question if nobody else does. John, did you get a new, any new variances for setbacks since the last time you were here?
No, we have not gone to, we received variances for the project, and we're going forward with the variances that we received.
So if, if the idea, if you tried to push the building farther to the left or southwest, that would require new variances?
Yes.
If you maintain the same-sized structure?
Correct. It's only a three-foot setback in the front and a six-and-a-half in the rear at the base of a steep slope. So it's getting to be sort of the limit of constructability. But I'm going to let Attorney Phoenix talk more about that.
Okay. Anything else from, for John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tim Phoenix from Hopeful Phoenix, Wilmington Roberts. You'll be happy to hear that I don't have a whole lot to say because John said everything pretty much that I was going to say in the first place. The only thing I would add to what John said in, in response to Chair Chelman's comments is that we don't think it is necessary or reasonable to slide the house further west and go back and seek variances. Variances are not particularly easy to get. We, we got these. I think, and we're asking this board to consider this application on balance. The fact that the board approved the subdivision suggests that a home can be built on this lot. And when you compare what's being done here with the significant, over, I think it's over 50% reduction in impervious within the buffer and re-establishment of buffer plantings, et cetera, together with the fixing of the outfall and the preparing, at the city's request, of an area for their trucks to turn around when they're plowing and what have you. It doesn't make sense to require us to go back and seek another variance. I'm no expert on it, but I took my, my scale on my copy of the reduced-size plans and measured, how far would you have to get, go west, to get the entire building outside of the buffer? And by my calculation, by the, by the time you got to where you hit the property line, a small part of the building would still be in the buffer. And then you couldn't walk around your own house without going off, off the lot. So given that we're preparing, providing all this benefit, and there's been no suggestion by anyone that I've heard that what, that this project is going to be harmful to the resource, I don't see the purpose of it. Also, as John said, this has to be looked at, or we ask you to look at it, in the context of the surrounding area. As John mentioned, this isn't in a vacuum where a home is being built right along the water. We have the traveled public street to all the houses there with cars going up and down it all the time. We have a number of houses closer yet to the water with boat docks and what have you. And of course, we have the use of the mill pond and the surrounding areas by boats that are creating, dropping gas, oils, et cetera, into the resource already. And that's a fact of life, that's part of, part of life. And I know we're trying to, to make things better over time with conservation-minded efforts, but we think that we have met those efforts, at least to the extent that it's reasonable, and that is the, the test. I would just turn to the staff memo on this. John's gone through all of the requirements, but the, the final note, comment on it is, please note that the plans as presented to the planning board reflect significant changes to the ones originally presented to the Conservation Commission in November. I would also point out that, just to give you a little history of how this thing started, we've been involved since the beginning because, as usual, and as required, you can't get to the planning board until you get your zoning relief. We originally had a duplex intended. That was not received very well, so a single-family of about 1,920 square feet was proposed. That was significantly, that was reduced to under 1,700 square feet, and now has been reduced further unto, under 1,500 square feet. And as John mentioned, over, around 2,000 square feet of impervious within the buffer is now under 1,000, a 50% or greater reduction. And as he also mentioned, we've moved the house 18 feet to the west and made it skinnier, as he put it. So we think that we've undertaken reasonable efforts to gain the approval of this board for this project, particularly under circumstances where, at least I've heard, no one say that this, an area of roof, if you will, the corner of the house in the buffer, is going to harm the wetland, given the removal of the impervious surface and its restoration to plantings. That's all I have to add, unless you have questions, which we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Shagnon?
Corey?
Thank you, Attorney Phoenix. Just, you brought up the Conservation Commission meeting in November. Just a couple of questions. I know there were a couple of motions that were made at that meeting regards to porous pavement in the city turnaround area, shrubs being kept clear in that turnaround area. Would the, does the applicant have any concerns with either one of those stipulations if this was to move forward?
I guess John wants to answer that question.
Okay, perfect.
I'm happy that he does.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Member Clark. So the plans were revised. If you go back one sheet, originally, the buffer plantings were situated here above, I guess we got to go back another sheet, sorry. They were situated above, whoop, one more cell, sorry. And still another one. There we go. Thank you. So the buffer plantings were situated sort of over here, and some of them were situated here northwest of the turnout. And obviously, you're going to be plowing some snow there. So for the long-term health of the buffer plantings, they were moved away and extended here. We actually added more buffer plants than, made the buffer area bigger than what was on that plan. In regards to the porous pavement, I know that you will appreciate this. We looked at the design, and given the proximity of the ground to the, the mill pond, it's only at elevation nine, so to put that porous pavement in, we were actually going to have to under-drain it to the catch basin for it to really function well. And then you're sort of balancing the, oh, well, now we're putting maybe something right into the groundwater, so.
And I assume that catch basin just goes right to North Mill Pond?
Correct, correct. But we are going to add a hood to it. We're going to put in a snout so that it's going to help deal with surface runoff, oils and such. So it's going to improve that situation. So putting the porous pavement there, we're not opposed to it, but on balance, I'm not sure it's the right thing to do, given the proximity to the water table and the resource.
Sure. One more question, Chairman. As far, this wasn't on the original November, one of the stipulations, but would the applicant be opposed to using Northeast, Northeast Organic Farming Association management practices on this property in regards to landscaping?
Yeah, that was brought up by the Conservation Commission, and I'm happy to tell you that we wholeheartedly accepted that.
Sorry, Ian, there.
If you look at the detail sheet, the seating specifications, talk about it, there's a note on this plan that says to use those. So we're there 100%.
Excellent. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Any other board questions? We have public comment, people speaking to or against the application. First round, those speaking for the application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Anybody on Zoom? Does her hand up? Do you have somebody on Zoom?
They need to state their name and address when they come along.
This is Kendra Ford. I'm at 30 Pine Street. I was not aware of this on the agenda, actually, but I'm, I'm really curious about building this close to tidal water when we know the seas are rising. How does this plan line up with the maps of where the seas will rise in Portsmouth? It seems like North Mill Pond is going to just come to that house.
Yes, John, would you like to answer that?
Sure. That, I think the city has done a great job in recognizing sea level rise, and that's why you adopted the ordinance about the extended flood hazard zone. And so the house being out of that zone limits its impact. And so the house being out of that zone limits its impact, the impact that sea level rise will have on this structure. Hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you, and that was my mistake. I shouldn't have asked you to answer that question, so. Any other comments by lady on Zoom?
No other hands raised.
No other hands? Any second round speakers, for or against? Third round speakers? We're gonna close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant conditional use permit as presented.
Second.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure, yeah, I most certainly will. You know, as, as was clear in the presentation, you know, this has been before several times, or not before us, but before the city boards, you know, starting with the Conservation Commission, and they, you know, they requested that the applicant move things back. They did, I think, at least once, if not twice. And while it didn't pass the Conservation Commission, it still came to, came to the planning board. And at that time, it was a different plan. It was, you know, had the turnaround driveway, everything was shifted much more into the buffer. And I think we had a, you know, a good discussion at that point in time on trying to really shift this as much as possible out, outside. And so I think the, I think the applicant has done that. They've, you know, they went through the different criteria, certainly. You know, it is being built within the wetland buffer. However, given the current site out there, we have a gravel turnaround area with no stormwater treatment whatsoever, that's, you know, running into, running into North Mill Pond, you know, issues with the catch basin out there and everything else. I think this, this, this application, while it does have a, a new structure, is an overall improvement for the North Mill Pond, and certainly trying to enhance or make the stormwater coming off that site better for the pond overall. And so with that, I will be supporting the application.
Thank you.
I have one question for Peter Brits. Based off of, since you spent a lot of time with Conservation Commission, based off of their discussions on this project, and I apologize, I wasn't actually at the November 18th meeting, but do you feel like some of the changes that have been made since that meeting, since they've seen it and since the planning board requested, are they moving in the direction that some of those votes might have changed?
I would say, I would say they certainly are moving in the direction. They were, they saw the buffer planting, so they're pleased about that, but they, the improvements they've made to that, the reduction of the footprint, so they have addressed some of them, for sure.
And then I have another question. I am not quite sure whether you or possibly Attorney Sullivan might be able to answer. Are we allowed in our approvals to be able to restrict them from coming back before us to ask for any more paver area or structures within the buffer for this specific lot? I don't know if we've done that before. Believe it or not, I can't remember.
The only restriction I know, I'm aware of, is we have an exemption for, if you want to expand a property in the buffer, and that exemption's limited, they track it over time, so you can't keep coming back for an expansion. I'm not aware of any restrictions in the ordinance, anyway, that you could put up.
Based on, as I understand the state law, we have three options. We can approve, deny, or approve with conditions. That could be a condition. Now, I don't know if that's, I've not seen that condition, but it definitely would fall under that category.
Okay, thank you.
We have Corey's motion and a second. Any amendments to the motion? Board ready to vote on it?
Is that a stipulation you'd like to add, Beth?
If we are allowed to add it, I certainly, I mean.
What were the, what were the stipulations?
I'm trying to figure out how to word it in my head, and I still haven't come up with a good one, so.
No further impact?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We make a stipulation that there be no further impact for this specific lot in the wetland buffer. That's a good way to put it. Yes, I would like to request that that might be part of it.
We have proposed amendment. Is there, do you accept the amendment?
Yep, I accept the amendment.
So we have a motion, a second, an amendment to the motion, and a second to the amendment. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr., Mr. Hewitt?
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Okay, one abstention. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chelman?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo?
Yes.
City Manager Canard?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, except for one extension.
It passes.
We have a chair issue.
The chair is broken, sorry.
Oh, that chair, another one?
We've had some chair issues every meeting I've been. Musical chairs.
I think if I'm keeping track, and I may not be, so please feel free to jump in. I believe we're on to public hearings, new business?
Yes, 27 Shaw, yes.
Five A. Request of Austin Repair and Renovation LLC as owner for property at 27 Shaw, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide one existing lot with 57,354 square feet lot area, 230 feet of street frontage on Shaw Road, and 127 feet of frontage on Walker Bungalow Road into two lots as follows. Proposed Lot 1 with 34,205 square feet of lot area and 230 feet of street frontage on Shaw Road. Proposed Lot 2 with 23,149 square feet of lot area and 127 feet of frontage of Walker Bungalow Road. Property is shown on the assessor's map, 223, Lot 18, and is located in the single residence B district. Who is here to speak in favor of this application? Before this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Coronati, Jones and Beach Engineers, here representing Clyde Logue, who is in the, the audience. Clyde's the new proud owner of 27 Shaw Road, and he would like to basically subdivide one frontage lot off of Walker Bungalow Road, which is on the, the north side of the property. The existing house would stay on a conforming lot, meeting all the setbacks. The new lot would have adequate frontage lot area and, and a new driveway off of Walker Bungalow. The, this area, as you are well aware, is proposed to have city sewer sometime in the near future. So we have requested a waiver for not having onsite sewage disposal on the lot. Mr. Logue would, would be, like to build, put a holding tank on the property until he can tie into the sewer. And the site required no variances for this subdivision. There's no, there's no wetlands on site, and, and it's fairly, I think, straightforward for a two-lot subdivision. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman? The plan shows a six-inch PVC from, from the end of Cliff Road, even though it's not really the road right there, coming under the stone wall. Is that drainage from the property? Is there any flow adjustment that needs to be drafted for that?
It's a, we did not find the end to it. It was coming into the catch basin, and we think it's just an underdrain.
Okay.
Of some sort. There's a low spot right there.
Mr. Chair? If I might, there's a, there was a call today about that pipe, and, and I, I can't prove this, but I can represent what the, a budding property who may be present, I'm not sure, at the meeting, but will speak at the public comment, I'm sure, but their, their statement was that that pipe is an outflow from a stream that starts further up the street, and on heavy rain events, discharges a lot of water. So I think just wanted to raise awareness about that so that they would capture that and understand it.
Discharges onto this?
Discharges onto this property from further up the street, a few properties away, actually.
Okay.
Crosses under one property, completely underground, and has daylighted two properties up.
Where is the pipe on the plan, 'cause so folks can follow?
It's at the end of the, what's represented as Cliff Road.
I know that, I wanted people to know. So it's at the end of Cliff Road. It's at the upper left part of the plan, for those folks trying to follow this. Councilor Moreau?
Could you talk a little bit more about what this storage tank, because, I mean, you're clearly planning on building before, the sewer connection's possibly gonna be there, 'cause that could be some time. So could you explain exactly what it is you're doing, or what it's going to be, how it's gonna work, and, yeah, is it above ground, underground? What is, more details?
So the, there would be a 2,500-gallon holding tank, which is basically a, a very large septic tank that would be put in the ground. The tank has alarms for when it gets, starts to reach its capacity, and it would have to be pumped out. And it's not uncommon, you know, in a situation like this where you have pending sewer coming to the site, it's gonna take a while before the house is built and occupied and actually using the holding tank. So there's some, we still have to go through any conditions the board grants. We have to get state approval for a holding tank, and there's other residents out there that are in the same holding tank scenario right now, waiting for sewer to come along. And so it's, it's pretty common in a situation like this, and, and it would, would be installed and operated by, you know, and used by the owner.
So it would be underground, and there'd be no leach field or anything like that associated with it? Okay, thank you.
I just had a question.
Yeah, so this property is in zoning, in the zone SRB, which is supposed to be 15,000 square feet, 100-foot frontage, but then also 40% open space. So if this is divided, does the existing house end up with 40% open space on its smaller property?
It does. I'm trying to find the, the calculation. Yes, the, the remaining lot would be 0.7 acres. That's about 30,000 square feet. I don't know if we do have the calculation on the. But what, you can tell the only, the driveways are quite small on the property, and we have the, just the house, and we would meet the, we can add that calculation. I don't have that on the plan right now, but we can provide that as a condition.
Thank you.
And if we had to, we would, I don't think we're gonna have to come back or move the lot line to meet that. That did not come up previously, I apologize.
Any other board questions?
I just want to, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. One was the, the issue of the sewer. If the, if there was no sewer yet in the street, they'd, they still would need to have DES, the Hampshire DES approval for the holding tank prior to a building permit, and that's in the condition that we have listed here.
Yeah.
And then the other, the other comment I do have would be the, and this would be for the engineer. On the rain garden, I didn't notice, I didn't see any detail, design details for the, for the rain garden, either dimensionally, depth, or anything like that, sizing requirements. And I think they should be, I would probably make a recommendation that those be added to the plan later, if they can't provide them right now. And also typically, a rain garden would have an overflow structure where if the, if it got too high, the elevation of the, of the, of the stormwater in the, in the, in the rain garden, it wouldn't up over top into the street, it would go into the overflow, and then there are the catch basin they could probably connect to. So I'd like to see those details added, so. I don't know if that's something you looked at, um?
We, we did, yes. There's a catch basin basically right in the, the edge of the rain garden, and the rain garden would be approximately six inches lower than the, than the rim of the catch basin. And then the, if the rain garden was to fill up, then exactly what you said would be the, the catch basin.
Typically, we'd like to see a, a structure in the rain garden, an overflow structure, just in case that catch basin got clogged up or anything, you'd have a pipe connection to that, to that catch basin.
With a riser.
Yes, exactly. If that's something that normally, often is done.
We could certainly add that.
Okay.
So what you're, what you're saying, I think, as I understand it, instead of just a typical, you're looking for something specific to the site with elevations, or?
Yes, right now, it'd be difficult to, to really construct that rain garden without dimensionals and elevations. So I'd like to see those details also, probably, like I said, if I can entertain a condition later on the vote, something to that effect.
Any other board questions? Since this is a, I have a question. I assume the proposed lot will have a single-family residence on it?
Yes.
Three-bedroom home?
If it's three-bedroom, yes.
So that'll require pumping every week, roughly?
I mean, the, with three-bedroom homes, the DES says that, you know, you use 150 gallons per day per bedroom.
Right.
Which I think is how you're getting that math, but the, the reality of that flow is quite exaggerated. You know, it's, it's more common to be more, you know, closer to 70 gallons per day per bedroom if you're using all the bedrooms. You know, so I think, I think it'd be much less than that. I don't, I don't know if all the bedrooms would be full, you know, so probably even much less frequent than, you know, maybe every, once a month, maybe once occupied.
Depends on how much you use the laundry, of course.
Party's, Clyde throws, and things like that, but.
Do you have, have you done a holding tank in the city before?
I have not done one in this city, no.
Great.
There are some.
Is there a procedure? Does staff have a procedure for that?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it would be a DES approval process, just like a septic, state approval.
Just a state, okay.
Yeah, it's similar to approving a septic system, similar application and review by the state.
I'm familiar with that process. I'm just familiar with the city process.
It's also depending on future sewer. Hopefully award that bid very soon, so that would play into their decision-making.
Okay. I guess that's it for the board. Any other? Any of the members of your team presenting, or is it?
Nope, just me, sir.
Open it up for public comment. First round speakers. There any Zoom comments on this one?
Yeah, is there a Zoom comment on this? Yep, Ms. Lloyd, you can go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can end up here, I need.
And, yes, and your address, please?
It is 45 Cliff Road. We also back on Walker Bungalow. I'd like to start with saying thank you very much for bringing this to everyone's attention. I'm the one that called up and talked to Peter about the PVC pipe. We've lived at this address for 21 years. We are lucky enough to be one of the ones that was able to talk to some of the original owners of the houses in this neighborhood. It was developed in the 1950s, and when we moved in, there were still some residents that had built their own houses in the 1950s. So we got a lot of history as to how it got developed. So as Peter had mentioned, the PVC pipe that is shown on page six of the packet in the top-left corner, where the non-existent paper Cliff Road is, that six-inch pipe is the end, the terminus, open-air terminus to what was originally a complete stream system. Currently, it is in piping system in the next property that is north of this proposed new lot. The next lot beyond that going north is actually our property, and we are the only one that still has the actual original natural stream that goes through our back. And we are the only one that still has the actual original natural stream that goes through our backyard. It also does continue in piping underneath the two further north properties. And these, all these properties are on the west side of Walker Bungalow. And it is not connected to the pond, interestingly, that's on Walker Bungalow. So this whole stream flows south and open air terminates at this property. During any heavy rains, this stream ends up blasting out of that pipe, a six-inch pipe, as solid water and blasts out at about three to four feet out from this pipe. It does end up flooding that back of the yard and therefore, I don't know that anyone's done any evaluation for whether that is actually technically wetlands. But it is a continuous stream that is almost always a wet stream and is always flowing all the way through these yards and down that embankment of the backyard of this proposed lot. So I would, I would like to project and, and recommend and suggest that there needs to be some level of evaluation to double check and determine whether that is considered to be wetlands. Because all of this neighborhood is a very wet, uh, neighborhood. Um, the water level is very close to the surface of the ground. And all, if you've ever walked through the woods that go between Walker Bungalow and Martin College, all of that back there is all wetlands, even though it's all forest. So this whole area is very delicate in wetlands. And I believe this property that's being suggested to be a new separate lot that they're building a house on probably also does contain wetlands.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments by Zoom or members of the audience?
Not on Zoom. Not on Zoom.
Not on Zoom? Any other two for or against the application? Second round speakers, uh, what that would include Zoom again? Anybody? No Zoom? Sharon, did you want to speak again, second round?
Yes, please. Yes, please. So it's Sheridan Lloyd, 45 Cliff Road. The one additional stipulation beyond just having an evaluation of wetlands on this property. I would also like a stipulation that at no point in time can that, uh, pipe be blocked and/or plugged or any other way of eliminating the ability for the stream to continue doing it, flowing the way it has flowed for, it's been decades. Like I said, we've been there for over 20 years. And it's been there well beyond that, you know, being in the piping system that it is. If this ends up being eliminated or plugged or anything else, it's going to end up creating tremendous problems of, of flooding in multiple properties north of this proposed new lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other second round speakers, Zoom or otherwise? Third round speakers? No, no more hands on Zoom? I guess not. I'm not.
No, sorry, no more hands on Zoom.
Should I ask you, Peter? I don't know how to ask a question about Zoom.
Well, the, the producer and Beverly are both keeping an eye out, so they're.
Okay.
If they, they'll tell us if there is. But you want to be a public speaker, Joe?
No, I just wanted to answer that question or answer that comment, respond to that comment.
Uh, not, you're not actually supposed to respond to the comments.
They can only as a member of the public, they can speak during the public session, just not.
As a member of the public, okay.
I can wait till they close the public if you want.
Well.
No, we need to do it before that.
The public, public hearing is about to get closed, so this is your chance.
All right. The only thing I, I would like to say is we did have, uh, Go Environmental Services go out to the property early on. They walked the, uh, walked the property, verified that there were no, um, no areas of the property that actually contained wetlands that qualified with the three criteria for wetlands. And we could, uh, we'd be happy to have a, um, condition that they stamp the, um, the plan, the final plan that gets recorded. We do have a note on the plan that talks about no wetlands being observed on the premises. If you'd like.
Note 12.
Yes.
Okay, any other third round speakers, Zoom or otherwise? We've closed the public hearing. Open it to the board. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to approve the waiver request for section, uh, six, no, I'm sorry, 11.11 of the subdivision regulations, sorry, 6.11 of the subdivision regulations.
Second.
And I guess I'll just comment on that. Um, you know, while a holding tank is not ideal. Um, I do think in this instance where there is a future sewer connection that's going to be made, um, hopefully sooner rather than later. I think, um, I think that that is, um, that is feasible for this lot. Also the fact that this will have to go through NATS subsurface review in order to, uh, to get that holding tank in there, so.
So that's, that aspect of it. Um, any other comments about that?
Do you, do you, it's possible you could do both if.
We need to take separately.
We've got to do them separately?
When you do waivers, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because you have to have a two-thirds vote on a waiver.
Okay, all right. So roll call vote on that?
On the waiver request?
On the waiver request. So the, the motion was to grant the waiver from section, uh, 6.11, 6.11. So, uh.
I remember I was having trouble with that number.
Jim Hewitt?
Uh, yes.
Peter Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalman?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
Mr. Miss, uh, Counsel, uh, City Manager Cannard, sorry, out of practice.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay. That motion is unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to approve preliminary and final subdivision with the following stipulations A through F. But I would also like to add another stipulation that, uh, 40% open space shall be maintained on the existing and proposed lots. Another stipulation that, um.
You want to show the calculation for the existing lot, for the 40%?
So calculation?
On the, on the plans.
On the plan, so. The plans shall include the calculation for the 40% open space on both the existing and proposed lots. Add rain garden details to plan set that include a riser overflow structure. And I will also, I don't know if this should be a stipulation or not, but, uh.
Bless you.
You know, we'll see what the second goes. But, uh, the applicant shall work with the city on a flowage easement for that pipe coming out. Because it's the, this, the applicant's going to have to grant the city, um, some sort of flowage easement if it's technically part of the city's stormwater system, which I don't know. But it basically needs to get resolved in one manner or another. So, um, I think that's a good starting spot to get the conversation going between the applicant and the city on how to deal with that flowage.
To provide a flowage easement if necessary?
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
Have it evaluated and determine if it needs one.
Those are second one?
Uh, can I make a comment?
Well, do we need, did we get a second?
I, I was the second.
You did second it, okay.
I'd like to add to that if I possibly can.
One second, one second.
That's what I was going to do. Note number 15, Rick, that you were mentioning, says existing lot 18 shall provide a flowage rights drainage easement to benefit lot 18-1 in order to manage runoff.
Yeah, but we're also talking a flowage easement for the city, if it's a city pipe, not just for the adjacent lot.
I think, I think the site is generally grading down.
Uphill, downhill, yeah.
From the top to the bottom. And so that's to cover for the new lot. But I think what is being discussed is that mysterious pipe that comes in from Cliff Road.
Right.
So I think there are two issues.
Okay.
Uh, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Uh, including, um, yeah, so is, to add to sort of the drainage piece, I think that it needs to be a stipulation that it is truly determined, the ownership of that pipe and whether or not, um, and that any drainage that needs to be continued is definitely, um, that they'll do that work in order to make sure that that flow is not only not stopped, but if it needs additional piping or whatever additional that done. And that the plans are indeed stamped as to whether wetland determination. That's the one extra.
Yep, I agree.
Uh, my only question about it, do we know it's a city runoff?
That needs to be determined.
My question would be, and Beth, you, you certainly know about this. Uh, if it's been running on this property for a great many years, there may be a prescribed easement that's developed by somebody somewhere over this property?
I think Attorney Sullivan could speak to that even better. Yes, wake up.
Couldn't hear the question off because of the masks and everything.
Um, we're talking about whether or not the pipe that runs under what used to be Cliff Road, whether or not that's city-owned, whether or not we know it's city-owned, and whether or not, um, there needs to be easements for it.
Uh, I heard that part. I do know, I do not know. Uh, this is the first I've heard of this application.
So if we put in stipulations for that determination to be made and for easements to be granted, is that enough to cover?
That's enough.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
So it may not be the city then. It would be a determination of the origin of the water flow and a resolution of easement rights.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be a?
Yep, that would be fair to say, yes.
Okay, any, yes, Ray?
I'd just like to add one other thing to the rain garden, um, concerns. As far as the maintenance of that rain garden, typically on, on many other projects, we, we typically require the owner to be responsible for the maintenance of that rain garden in perpetuity. And usually it's put in the deed so that any future owner would know that the rain garden needs to be maintained and, and, and not removed also. I'd like to add that if.
So the plan will be recorded at the registry? Or would a note on the plan cover that?
Yes. Yeah. As long as it's on notice at the registry, yes.
Okay.
So that, that rain garden would actually be servicing part of the new lot as well, right?
Yes, yes, it would.
And I, I noticed that Cory made the motion about an overflow structure for the rain garden. Did you want to add design details to that? Did, did that come up?
Yeah, essentially the motion was.
Details, dimensions.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Okay, good.
So Peter, you just adding that recommendation with the note on the plans to that stipulation?
Raise?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That works for me.
So that was, uh, an amendment to the motion and the original motion and, and second are, are okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Any other board? We, we do have already a condition for DES approval on this holding tank, correct?
Yes. That would be letter E.
Okay, I think, uh, I think we're ready for another roll call.
Okay. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalman?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
City Manager Cannard?
Yes.
Ms. Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
I believe the next item on the agenda is Monarch Village.
Nope, that's postponed.
Monarchy Village postponed.
Postponed?
Yeah.
I didn't put a check mark beside it.
Sagamore Corner?
Yeah.
Sagamore?
Sagamore Corner.
Five, five C?
And D.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, can I make a motion to consider, uh, five C and D to be discussed together and voted on separately?
We have a second. Any discussion?
Ready? Roll call. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalman?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
City Manager Cannard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yeah.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
So we have, uh, items five C and D on the agenda for 960 Sagamore Avenue. I'll let the applicant describe it since we've already jumped in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Francis Bruton. I'm with Bruton and Barrowby in Dover. Um, for those who haven't seen me or met me, uh, you may hear other people refer to me as FX. That's two letters, so Francis Xavier. So just in case you hear that, that's me. Um, with me tonight is the applicant, Eric Kates is here. And he's, uh, uh, principal at Sagamore Corner LLC, as well as Eric Weinrib, uh, who will, uh, come up and give you a little bit more of the details of the project. And Robbie Woodburn is here as well. And, um, she is here in case you have any questions with respect to the landscaping that you'll see on the plans or. So, um, as you may be aware, this is a project that, um, is really a renovation or a tear down of the, what was the golden egg, which also had some other uses to it. Um, as you may know, the golden egg is placed fairly close to Sagamore Avenue. And, um, in fact, uh, the people using that facility were often parked in the right of way. Uh, so one of the things that this, uh, uh, plan does is obviously alleviate, uh, not only that, but, um, some buildings that are obviously in a little bit of disrepair. And, um, uh, it also dresses up the backside of that property, which is also a concern for the neighbors with respect to, um, its appearance and, uh, uh, you know, rodents and things of that nature. So in any event, um, uh, we look at it as a very positive, uh, change for the area. The lot is, uh, in the RMB zone. And, uh, right now it contains a significant amount of impervious, uh, surface, given the, uh, building, uh, uh, configuration and the, um, existing pavement on the, on the lot. The, uh, uh, also, the lot also lacks, uh, significant drainage mitigation features. Uh, and again, I mentioned there's dumpsters and debris and, and whatnot in the, in the back of the lot. The lot's, um, somewhat unique in that it is encumbered by basically a 100-foot wetland buffer. Uh, and, um, there's a very, very small portion of wetlands on the lot in the very rear. But again, um, it kind of pushes everything forward. The plan is for a six-unit, uh, uh, building. Uh, this would be, uh, three, uh, two, two-bedroom condominium units in each of the second and third floor. The first floor would contain parking that would be enclosed and heated. Um, we have a driveway going down what is known as Sagamore Grove, uh, so that we can direct the traffic to that point and to the rear of the building. And then there's an entranceway, obviously, for the, for the parking underneath. The project has been through, um, a lot of review by the city. It's been through, uh, technical advisory group. Um, it's also been through the Conservation Commission, as well as, uh, extensive discussions with the planning staff. As a result of those discussions, um, we were able to come up with a plan that results in, um, taking away 750, uh, square feet of existing, uh, impervious surface within the wetland buffer and getting down to zero, which I hope is, uh, uh, good for you to hear. What we have remaining and what is subject to the conditional use permit is in order to do the construction and, and work with the drainage and, and make this a better site, we have about 1,100 square feet of temporary disturbance in the wetland buffer. And as a, uh, second aspect to that, uh, we have a 10-foot by 10-foot patio, but it would be pervious. Uh, so it would be a 10-foot by 10-foot patio, basically to have something like a grill for the, uh, the people in the units to utilize. That's in the wetland buffer to basically stay away from, you know, the parking activities and obviously stay away from Sagamore Avenue in the front. Um, so we're asking for that, uh, 10-foot by 10-foot area, uh, again, with a pervious surface underneath it. So, um, we, uh, originally, uh, came forward with a project at eight, eight units. And as a result, uh, we did get some abutter input. And with working with the abutters, we were able to, uh, come to a plan that resulted in six units. And that also resulted in, um, unanimous support of those abutters who had approached us with any concern of the project. So, um, you know, it was a kind of a win-win-win project, if you will. Hopefully you would agree with me on that. We worked again with the staff, with. We worked again with the staff with Concom and TAC to come up with a plan that we think you will appreciate and approve. And as one final note for me, all of the conditions of approval that were set forth by staff are acceptable to the applicant. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to have Eric come up and just go through the conditional use criteria. And then if you have any questions for us, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll read the note. For the record, Eric Weinrib with Altus Engineering. Congratulations, Mr. Chalmers, and new board. Nice to see some new faces, and I'm very excited to see the direction it goes. I don't know where Mr. Hewitt is, but hello. And it's always a little frustrating following an attorney, because I think my entire presentation was what FX had presented. Do I get to control this at all?
You get to point, but Beverly has the con, if you will, so maybe she can change the slide?
Go one more.
One more?
Okay, so just to, I think everyone in this room knows the site. It is the former Golden Egg. It's 960 Sagamore Avenue. But it really shows the proximity to Sagamore Creek and the intersection of Sagamore Grove and the roadway. And you can also see on this plan, the aerial, the sea of pavement in front of the existing building. Go to the next one. As FX had mentioned, it's a pretty tired site. It's a really tired site. You can see the back of the house in the lower left-hand corner, where there's dumpsters there from when it was a restaurant. The building has deteriorated. It's a gravel parking lot that it's in a haphazard condition, some of which, that parking area, that gravel parking area is in the 100-foot buffer. In front, you can see the middle top that, as FX said, also, that it's pavement that's, you can't tell the difference between Sagamore Avenue and the parking lot in the right-of-way. Everyone backs into the street. It's a pretty, restaurant's not open right now, but it's a pretty unsafe area, and if it were to continue in its current form, it would remain unsafe. Go to the existing conditions plan? Thank you. So when we initially did the survey for this property, we were considering actually three parcels: the corner parcel, the Golden Egg, and then the parcel up 1B Wentworth House Road. It is, turned out, we're just working on the Golden Egg. That's why the survey indicates all three parcels. As, how do I hit the? How do I highlight that in the other way?
I think it's the small button?
Try the big round button.
Yeah, we do. Oh, wow. So this corner right here is the odd-shaped corner of the parcel, and it's the only portion of the parcel that is in the wetland. But it has, because of that, is only a small portion in the wetland, but it has that 100-foot buffer. Whether it was on our property or not, we would still have that wetland buffer. Let's go to the existing, the site plan, please. Thank you. So what we're proposing is to eliminate all that parking in front, put a new six-unit building with access off of Sagamore with direct access into the basement for the residence, covered parking area, and then access internally up through the building for the resident. On the outside, we have five additional parking spaces for visitor parking, including a handicap space outside for visitors, as well as the handicap space inside. We're having permeable pavement for the accessway and the parking spaces, with the exception of the area where the handicap parking is. And the, I'll call it the ramp, so the accessway is down into the garage and in the right-of-way for the surface parking. The grading plan, if we could? Thank you. So where did that come from? As previously mentioned, the site is highly impervious. It's got gravel in the back, pavement all through the front. And what we're doing is we're enhancing it from a stormwater management in every aspect possible. The rear of the site has the permeable porous pavement, so that we can infiltrate the pavement and get treatment in the area adjacent to the wetland buffer. The pavement that is in the right-of-way, now that's in front of the site, that's all being removed and becoming vegetated, so that's a reduction in pavement. And then in front of the site, between the building, on the property, between the building and the right-of-way, we're doing subsurface stormwater treatment, then discharging into the catch basin. Currently, the site, including the existing off-lot used pavement surfaces, has approximately 25,000 square feet of impervia. There'll be a reduction of 8,400 square feet and an effective impervious area of only 16,000 square feet. We're going to be getting a proposed water service off of Sagamore Ave with a separate domestic and fire protection. And similar to the previous application, we're going to be putting in a holding tank as a temporary measure until the sewer comes forward. However, with this, and this area is, what I understand, and Mr. Bezullo could speak to it, is that it's not part of the base bid for the sewer that's out on the north side of Sagamore Creek. It's an add-alternate. And my understanding is that the city has, you know, can decide on doing that. It is part of the consent decree, in that it will eventually be on sewer at some point. And I think that if they decide to do it, the contractor has 150 days or so to complete the work. Our hope is that, we don't expect to be online with this project until the spring of, or summer, early summer of 2023. So we're hoping as we go forward, we're going to know which direction we're going. We don't want to build a holding tank. I don't think the city really wants us to build a holding tank. So it'll be what I'll say is more of a last-minute decision. We will get our approvals from DES for a holding tank, but we're going to sit on building it until we know exactly where we are. We might be at a point where we have to put it in. We'll put it in, then we'll convert to the E1 pump system. We have a very robust planting plan for the redevelopment, including wetland buffer enhancements and street skate planting. If you have any questions, Robbie Woodburn is here. And speaking to the conditional use permit, the entire explanation of the permit is in your packet, but I'll go through it briefly. As mentioned, there's 400 square feet of wetlands on the site. There's 13,650 square feet of wetland and wetland buffer on the parcel, which is about 31.8%. However, there is already 760 square feet of impervia disturbed areas within the buffer. When we're said and done, there'll be zero square feet of impervious in the buffer. We're not disturbing any natural areas. What we're doing is we're doing some regrading in these disturbed areas, and we're adding a 100-square-foot, 10-by-10 permeable patio for the grilling area for the people behind the property. This is located away from Sagamore Ave, away from Sagamore Grove, and because you're not allowed to have grills on your decks by code, we need to have a place. We put it away from the building a little ways to allow people to enjoy that natural area, and we're putting it, just that small area in the buffer. So for the criteria, the land is reasonably suited to the use, activity or operation. We're improving it. There is no alternative to site, everything outside the buffer and do the work. We could leave the site as it is. We're not going to. We're going to make it better. We're going to enhance the buffer. We're going to have that 10-by-10 porous patio, and we're going to remove 760 square feet of parking area. There'll be no adverse impacts on the functions and values as it is now. That gravel area provides no buffer, stormwater treatment. We're going to be enhancing it. We're going to be providing stormwater treatment. We're going to be adding landscaping that's going to pick up the nutrients, and we're going to be making it better in the buffer, as well as on the other side, where the water runs towards Sagamore Avenue and eventually to the creek. That area is also an enhancement, but not part of the conditional use permit. Alteration of the natural vegetated state or managed woodland will occur to only the extent necessary. We're not impacting any natural areas. It's all disturbed areas. And I believe that this alternative is the least impacting, where we're removing all this impervious area, adding the buffer, and providing stormwater treatment. And all the natural areas within the vegetated buffer that we're disturbing will be returned to its natural state, and then we have a very significant natural area between where we're working and the wetland buffer. And I just wanted to summarize, as FX said, this is a win-win for the city. We're improving stormwater management. We're improving buffer. We're actually, right now, the septic system is failed. They've been pumping while it was open, but that's really a moot point. There'll be no cars backing out into the street anymore. There'll be stormwater treatment. There'll be less chance for contaminants entering the wetlands and surface waters by the removal of the dumpsters and the commercial activities. And there'll be less vehicles on a very busy street. Thank you.
Any questions for Eric?
I'm here for questions at this point. Sorry. I just wanted to go home.
Eric, one real quick question.
Sure, Corey.
Great presentation. The page, the old page, labeled Subservice Sewerage Disposal System from the old egg that you put a lot of annotations on, including your new septic and everything. It's great. Every single tank on here, you said what you were going to do about, but there is also an existing 3,000-gallon concrete grease trap that's-
Yeah, all the built infrastructure will be removed, so that'll be removed. As a matter of fact, the septic system, anyone going down Sagamore Grove drives over that. It's a chambered system under that roadway.
Okay.
So I don't, if you can go back to the existing conditions plan, I think it shows up.
Yeah, some of them say to be pumped, filled, and abandoned. To be pumped, filled, and abandoned.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be, they're supposed to be pumped, but they're supposed to be removed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, Corey? Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. First comment I have is, you know, the electric vehicle charging in the basement, I think is a great idea, so thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, there's no AOT requirement for this site, right?
That's correct. We're under the 50,000 square feet.
Okay. So thank you for doing the 15% additional rainfall. I know one thing I noticed in here, and just for clarification purposes, it looked like you used the 48-hour rainfall data rather than the 24. Was that intentional, or is that just, I know the table can get a little complicated?
I'm going to jump to Corey on that, because he did those drainage counts.
All right, thanks.
Corey Belden with Altus Engineering. I think the intended is 24 hours, so, but I can look at them. If the, are you looking at the rainfall precipitation table?
Yeah, I was just looking at the Cornell data, and it looked like when you-
I might have highlighted the wrong column.
Okay.
The right numbers are probably in the model. That's my anticipation.
Okay, just want to make sure that-
But the 24-hour, I believe, is the intent, and what I believe is modeled for the study. Correct?
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, all right, thank you. One thing that I noticed as well, in the landscape maintenance plan, you guys call out, you know, requirements within the 250-foot shoreline area, which is actually because of Sagamore Creek, not because of this wetland. You know, you call out the slow-release nitrogen for that. Kind of the ironic thing I noticed is that 250-foot line is almost right on top of the 100-foot wetland buffer. So I guess my comment would be, would the applicant be willing just to call out, you know, the requirement of slow-release nitrogen on the entire site?
Sure.
Okay, great. And then my last question is just, I didn't notice any sidewalk access along Sagamore, or, you know, pedestrian crossing there or anything like that? Didn't know if that was discussed, you know, the reasoning behind that?
That was something that we debated. There is the sidewalk that is on the west side of Sagamore, and, you know, we worked with TAC, and it wasn't something that they required. And my intuition is that they're probably concerned with speed, and not a lot of people crossing there. And what I understand the term is that it would be more like a mid-block crossing, which isn't a recommended crossing. And so just to bring that a little bit further forward, we do have a walkway coming out of the front of the building, and that is not intended as an everyday use. That is actually fire egress access, but we had to have that walkway go, just like we do on all our other buildings, go from the building out to the street to a public way to allow people to leave. But it's not where there'll be deliveries, you know, UPS or FedEx or any of those. That will all be to that rear entry where the five spaces are. So we didn't believe that a sidewalk was, or crosswalk was necessary.
Okay, I guess off of, so the building to the north of Sagamore Grove, that also has a big curb cut, correct? Or am I wrong on that? Because there's no sidewalk, there's no sidewalk that terminates at that corner of-
There is no, the sidewalk ends at the bridge.
Right.
But I don't think, it has a vision of a large opening, but I believe that there's some sort of barricades in there that prevent a lot of access. Is that correct, Eric? Yeah. Off the top of my head, I feel like it's a sea of openness, but I believe it's fairly controlled on how you get in and out.
All right, I'm just trying to envision a way, you know, people living here walk downtown, that's all. So, you know, safely get onto the bridge where the sidewalks are.
So I think that, just like it is today for the people on Sagamore Grove, they'll wait for it to clear and then cross and go up the street.
Okay.
Mr. Jane, do you have a question?
Yeah. This is like just a genuine question. So am I reading this correctly, that there's a freshwater marsh on the property?
No, it's just a freshwater wetland.
A freshwater wetland?
Yeah.
So can you just explain, so that I can understand it, about how it's not going to undergo further degradation? undergo further degradation?
Very simple, how it's, it's going to be enhanced, because right now, in that wetland buffer, there's vehicular access, there are dumpsters, there's a propane tank, there's all sorts of built infrastructure there, and we're pulling all that out. So we're removing all that area that is impacted, creating a vegetated buffer with enhanced planting, and the only thing that we're putting in there as a permanent structure is a permeable patio. So of course it's going to be much better as far as the functions and values of that buffer, because there's less water getting to it, and there's less contaminated water getting to it.
So there won't be any further infill of that wetland, is that correct?
Further influence?
You're taking things out, but you're not going to build anything there or degrade it during building, is that right?
So during construction, we will be using the temporary erosion control measures that are depicted on the plan, silt fences and silt socks along that edge of the construction to make sure that there's no degradation during construction of silt and transport. There'll be stabilized construction exit as contractors leave the site, so there'll be no tracking of sediment. So we're doing absolutely the best we can to enhance it and make sure that there is no degradation during or after construction.
And then I had one other question, which is, I see a very long maintenance checklist, particularly of the porous surface, you know, that goes into vacuuming that porous surface yearly, I believe. Who carries that out, and how does the city know that that, you know, in-depth maintenance checklist is in fact being carried out?
Well, like most projects, there is a reporting requirement back to the city. And the nice thing is that as being a condominium, there's actually an association that that will be part of their bylaws and their covenants.
Right.
Any other, Mr. Corey?
Thank you. One thing I just noticed, the Conservation Commission had a couple of additional stipulations, one being the applicant shall include signage to demonstrate delineation that there is a sensitive resource wetland area beyond the 10-by-10 patio. And the second being, along the existing stone wall, existing tree line beyond the proposed patio, the applicant shall include additional buffer plantings.
And so those have both been added to the plan set that's already before you.
Great, thank you.
I had one question, Eric. The proposed conditions that I believe the attorney said you guys had agreed to, any easement plans and deeds for the city are to be approved by the planning and legal department. Can you point those out? Are any required?
I don't believe there's any easements required at all. As a matter of fact, the water line that discussed that an easement is, it's not like some of the others, whereas actually it's a very long line, and the curb stops are at the property line. So I'm not sure if that will actually be required or not.
So it's a standard condition, just in case?
Correct.
Okay. And one thing, this is not a critique, but I'd like especially the new board members to understand, could you explain how you are adhering to the building height stipulation by creating basically a building pad that does not conform with existing grade? And it's actually going to be built up a bit, and how that works?
So the physical height of the building is 26.5 feet high, and the regulations as crafted, it's the average grade around the building, five feet out, I think in a five-foot interval going around the building as the finished grade. It's not based on the existing grade.
I understand that, but I don't know that the new board members do. And I apologize if folks don't want to hear this.
That's okay.
I just think this relates to the conversations we've been having about how our ordinance works, and I just want the board members to understand that, because this building will be much higher than existing grade in certain locations at its base. And then, again, this isn't a critique, this is an explanation, then from that building pad, which is up in the air from existing grade, is where the building height is measured from. So looking at it from the road, what's out there today, you might think a building would be this high, but it's actually going to be a little bit higher because you're going to make a level pad to build the building on. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Does that help board members understand? Okay, thank you. Any other board comments? Open the public hearing. Comments to, for, or against first round? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? If you're a human, you can speak.
Good evening. This is Sheridan Lloyd again at 45 Cliff Road. So I live right down the street from this. So I just had a couple of questions.
Just one second.
I was reading the, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Lloyd. This gentleman had gotten up. We didn't realize you had your hand up, but go ahead. Ms. Lloyd, you can go ahead.
I, okay. I had read the whole report. It's a very long and detailed one, so thank you for putting together a great packet for information. But it looked like that the traffic, the evaluation of the amount of traffic was based on additional traffic on Sagamore Avenue, but it didn't seem to address any sort of impact on Sagamore Grove, which is actually where the driveways are being relocated to. So did I miss it? Is there any evaluation of what impact this is going to have on Sagamore Grove? Because Sagamore Grove is a really tiny street, and I think there may be some congestion with that number of cars coming out of this new complex, and it's a pretty sharp turn to then come from the complex right to the stop sign, and it may be having difficulties for anyone else that lives on the Grove to actually get out of their own street, because it is a challenging location. So that's one of my questions. And I would just like to comment too, having walked across the new bridge that's there, and yes, there is just sidewalk on one side, one of the other board members did suggest maybe having a crossing, one of those flashing crossing devices right there. And I think for the safety of that curve and having that number of new residents in that area, they would be crossing over to the sidewalk on the other side of Sagamore Ave. So I believe that that would be a very valid addition to this whole development, is having a safe crossing at that location and allow for a greater amount of pedestrian residents being able to walk into downtown Portsmouth from that, because it's certainly very walkable from that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, gee.
My name is William Tinkery. I've lived on Sagamore Grove for more than 15 years, and I currently live right across the street from the proposed development. And as far as I know, everybody on the street is in favor of the whole project. To answer the last question, as far as traffic, I think there'll be significantly less traffic with a condo than there was with a restaurant. There was tremendous coming and going there for a long time. The whole project's just going to be a big improvement for that area, for the wetlands, for the people that live there. So basically, I just want to say that we're strongly in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other first-time speakers? Nobody else on Zoom? Second-time speakers? No Zoom second-time speakers? Any third-time speakers in any part of the world? Close the public hearing. Board conversation, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant the wetland conditional use permit as presented.
Second.
I'll just speak on that, that, you know, I think they are doing a great reduction in this area. It's a small area, but they're certainly enhancing that buffer area. Yeah, they do have the patio in there, but I think it's certainly a good net reduction in impact in that location.
I agree. Actually, in having the signage, the Conservation Commission mentioned we'll provide a little educational component so people can understand what's there, so. Any other comment on the waiver? I guess we're ready for another roll call.
So this is a roll call on the wetland conditional use for 960 Sagamore. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Connard?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And on the site plan?
I will make a motion that we vote to grant site plan approval with the following stipulations, 2.1 through 2.11, with additional stipulation under conditions present to include language within the landscape maintenance plan and on the plan set itself to only use slow-release fertilizer on site.
Second.
Corey, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I think, well, you know, I do think this is a good project. I'm glad to see that all the folks that live down Sagamore Grove are, you know, approve of this project, and there's, you know, there's no impacts to them on it. But one thing I would like to just kind of get others' input is the whole pedestrian thing. You know, I do realize it's going to be awfully difficult to do any sort of sidewalk on the side of the proposed development, because for one, we don't have a sidewalk on that side, nor is the sidewalk continuing on the bridge on that side. The only sidewalk on the bridge is on the west side of Sagamore Ave. So there would have to be a crosswalk there. And given that, well, they do have the walkway from the building out to the road, like the applicant said, it's, you know, it's not going to be a full-time-use thing. But I also worry about people, people down Sagamore Grove then wanting to use that crosswalk. So if we were to say, okay, you know, let's put in a situation that we got to put a crosswalk at that walkway, well, it will work really well for the residents there, but what I'm afraid might happen is people are going to walk down Sagamore Grove and then walk around. So anyways.
Yes, Beth.
One of the things I was going to ask to add as a stipulation to it is that we have the applicant work with the planning department and maybe DPW to look at the feasibility of a crosswalk at the end of Sagamore Grove, so at the corner, not where the walkway comes out, but closer to the bridge right where Sagamore Grove, so then it would be much easier for everyone to be able to get across the street. I don't, obviously, I'm not looking at it, but I think if they at least look at the feasibility of whether or not that's a possibility, I think that would be a great way to solve that.
Yeah, I think so, too. My only concern with that is the infrastructure the applicant's putting in at that corner in order for their stormwater system. So there's going to have to be some...
That's why DPW and the planning would have to kind of figure that out.
Yeah, let's add it.
Yes, City Manager?
I think it would be appropriate for us to, with planning and DPW, to speak to the state, as this is a state road, and work together on an appropriate solution.
I think that's a good idea, because I can tell you from my own experience, and I'm not going to put any other members on the spot on this, getting a crosswalk across a state highway is not a small matter. There are pros and cons to it, as Eric explained. And as Corey said, if you don't provide the pedestrian facilities, people won't walk, or they'll be in, putting themselves in danger. So it's a bit of a conundrum.
Mr. Planning Director, is there a hand, or is it a comment? Oh, Mr. Hewitt wants to speak.
Yes, I can confirm that the state highway stops at the intersection of 1A and 1B at the Bean Group, and that section of Sagamore Ave in front of this development is city-maintained.
Yeah, because we did the bridge. That's right, we paid to actually do that bridge.
Great, well, then we don't have to include the state in that conversation.
I wondered about that, because I knew we paid for that whole bridge.
Yeah, that's right.
It's always what we pay for, right?
So Beth, if I can understand, I'm trying to understand the condition, it'd be a study between the applicant and the city staff to determine what, if anything, can be done?
Yeah, I mean, if it's totally not feasible, I'm going to let the city departments tell us that. But if there's a feasible way of doing it, and they can come up with it, then great, let's make it a stipulation that moves forward.
So the applicant would need to submit information adequate for the staff to determine in their discretion if it's feasible?
Or work with both DPW and planning, yeah. And obviously, Mr. Pazulo can correct me if I'm wrong as to whether or not that's a good way to do it.
I think so.
And would you, so you don't see that needing to come back to this board, but let that be worked out with staff?
Not unless it changes something on the site plan that we would actually have to have approval. They should be able administratively do that, yep.
Would that possibly include a sidewalk easement, or not?
No, because I'm not talking about building a sidewalk on that side. I'm talking about just building a crosswalk across the actual street, to the sidewalk on the other side.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the site plan with the stipulations listed, the additional one Corey added, and this additional study to be worked out with staff.
Right, and just to make sure it's very clear that it's my intention that whatever is determined to be done, that would be the applicant that would do that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
It is, sorry, talking to each other, it's hard to remember to talk into the microphone. It is my intention that, you know, once it's determined whatever can be done with a crosswalk, that we're putting it upon the applicant to actually do the, whatever's decided upon.
That, in terms of providing information, but if actually getting across the street might involve some other property owner, right?
And that might, that might be the case, but we're going to have to let that be determined by, like I said, if it needs to come back to us, then it does, but we'll let the city staff determine that.
Does everybody understand the motion? I think we're ready for another roll call.
Another roll call, this is for site plan review with stipulations. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalman?
Yes.
Mr. Pazulo?
Yes.
City Manager Connard?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
unanimous. Motion passes.
So I will, again, look to my board members for help in keeping me on track, but I think we're at 5E.
We are.
Thank you.
That's correct, yep.
Application of ADL 325 Little Harbor Road Trust, application to use permit in accordance with Section 10814 of the zoning for conversion of existing accessory dwelling structure, which was formerly the caretaker's home?
Oh, yeah.
Into a detached dwelling unit with a gross floor area of 1,300 square feet. Property shown on assessment map 2052 and lies within the rural and single-residence A districts. Corey, are you here to speak for the application?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corey Callow from TF Moran, on behalf of the applicants, the ADL 325 Little Harbor Road Trust. With me tonight is Jim Youngblood, our builder from Youngblood Builders, and Joss Bergeri, our landscape architect with Matthew Cunningham Landscape Design. Our application is to convert an existing accessory structure formerly known as the caretaker's house on the island into a detached accessory dwelling unit at 325 Little Harbor Road, which is also known as Bell Isle or Lady Isle. What I've got on the screen now is some pictures of the caretaker's house, a brief history of the island. It's approximately 12 acres in size. It's located in the rural zone. There is currently on the island a residential home, a carriage house... There is currently on the island a residential home, a carriage house, a barn, a horse shelter, and caretaker's home, which is what's pictured on the screen there. The caretaker's home and all the remaining structures are located on the easterly half of the island. The westerly half of the island is virtually untouched. Going to bring up a...
Beverly's changing it, so you could ask for the next slide to be easiest.
Okay.
That's just a pointer.
The next slide, please.
She's back there. But she heard you.
A couple more slides with an aerial image. Yep, if we could go through the plans to the aerial image. The, while she's bringing that up, the caretaker's home, as you could see from the pictures, it's in a state of disrepair. It currently contains about 2,400 square feet. This building was previously home to a family that lived on the island in the early 1900s. The island then became the home of a small Catholic school. Nuns lived on the island and schoolchildren were bussed back and forth to the island daily. The Sisters of Providence, the former owners of the island and the buildings, sold the property in 1998. The current owners, the ADL 325 Little Harbor Road Trust, bought the property in 2015. The school existed on the island from about 1941 to the 1990s. The caretaker's house has sat vacant on this island since the early 1990s. We're not sure just when it was constructed, however, there's some hand-hewn beams in the structure itself, and architecturally, we're told by local experts that they believe the vintage was early 1800s or possibly even earlier into the late 1700s. The building was slated for demolition a few years ago. However, after further consideration and understanding the historical significance of the buildings, the owners would like to renovate this building into a detached accessory dwelling unit. In your packets are a set of site plans, landscape design plans, architectural plans, and photos of the building. Also included is some aerial imagery of the island as it exists today. And then there's four photos in your packets showing what the island will look like post-construction. Our application proposes to remove the one-story appendages of that caretaker's house and restore only the main section, and this main section is where that timber frame currently sits. This reduces the area of the building from 2,400 square feet to about 1,300 square feet. This 1,300 square feet exceeds the 1,000-foot maximum allowed. However, Section 10.81470 of the zoning ordinance states that a dimensional modification of this standard can be issued by this board, and what is what we are requesting tonight. Simply stated, reducing the historical structure to anything less than 1,300 square feet would compromise its structural integrity and require demolition and rebuilding of this main historical portion. Furthermore, the island is over 12 acres in size. Post-construction, the island will contain 94% open space, where 75% is required, and will have a building coverage of 2.6% where up to 5% is allowed. We exceed the minimum for both of these zoning requirements. In addition to the dimensional requirements of Section 10.521, the zoning ordinance requires that a detached accessory dwelling unit also comply with the standards of Section 10.814.30 and 10.814.50, which include, first, that the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership. The entire property will remain under the ownership of the ADL 325 Little Harbor Road Trust. Secondly, that either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by the owner of the dwelling. The owner will continue to live in the principal dwelling unit. There is another application before this board, which was postponed tonight, where the rebuilding of that principal dwelling unit is proposed. We are currently submitting plans to tack and anticipate being back before this board within a month or two for that principal dwelling unit construction. So, the owner will continue to live in the principal dwelling unit as required in that section. Third requirement is that neither the principal dwelling unit nor the accessory dwelling unit shall be used for any business except which is allowed in the ordinance. Neither business is not proposed beyond what is allowed in the ordinance, and the owner has stated that in a letter to this board. Fourth finding is that where municipal sewer service is not provided, the septic system shall meet New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control Division requirements. We are currently working with the city to bring sewer to this island. However, this detached accessory dwelling unit and the main house are currently connected to an existing functioning septic system. Not part of this application, but the proposal that will be coming before this board in a month or two will demonstrate the removal of that septic system and connection to the city sewer. However, should that not happen, this building can continue to function as it sits today on the existing septic system. Fifth, in the rural district, a lot with a detached accessory dwelling unit shall comply with the minimum lot area for the district, but need not comply with the minimum lot area per dwelling unit. The minimum lot area in the rural district is five acres. This island contains 12.3 acres. Sixth requirement is that the DADU shall not have more than two bedrooms and shall not be larger than 750 square feet gross floor area, except that a maximum gross floor area shall be 1,000 square feet if the lot is two acres or more. As previously stated, this detached accessory dwelling unit will contain two bedrooms, however, it will contain 1,300 square feet, which exceeds that 1,000-square-foot limit. We're requesting this dimensional modification as permitted by Section 10.81470 of the zoning ordinance. The DADU shall be clearly subordinate to the principal single-family dwelling in scale, height, and appearance. The proposed DADU is subordinate in height, perimeter facade area, and appearance. It's approximately between 15% to 20% size of the principal dwelling unit. And the facade area of the DADU that faces a street on which the lot has frontage shall be no more than 40% of the combined visible facade areas of the principal single-family dwelling and DADU facing the same street. This property is a little unique, doesn't require, in our opinion, compliance with that because it's a, it doesn't have frontage, it's an island, it's surrounded completely by water. And last, a few requirements are that the building height of the DADU shall be less than the building height of the principal single-family dwelling. This proposed building, or existing and proposed, is 21 feet in height. The principal dwelling will be 32 feet in height, so we satisfy that requirement as well. The DADU shall be architecturally consistent with the principal dwelling through the use of similar materials, detailing, and other building design elements. This proposed DADU will be architecturally consistent design, materials, and other building elements. In fact, we've prepared a, if we could scroll through the drawings, please, to the aerial, there is four images of what the island looks like today, and I believe these are in your packets. And there are also four images post-construction of what the island's going to look like. And I'd like to bring your attention to, I believe it's photos, I believe they're labeled A, B, C, and D, and those show the island post-construction, and you can see the similar elements of design, detail, and facade. And the, lastly, the DADU shall be separated from a single-family dwelling by at least 20 feet. We're separated here by 112 feet. And the front wall of the DADU shall be set back at least 10 feet further from the front lot line than the existing wall of the single-family dwelling. Again, we're on an island, but if you were to use that water's edge, this accessory dwelling unit is set back further from the water's edge than the principal dwelling by approximately 20 feet. So, we comply with all those requirements, which are the required standard per your ordinance to satisfy the requirements of a detached accessory dwelling unit. Further, a conditional use permit to grant this detached accessory dwelling unit was granted by the Portsmouth Planning Board on June 20th, 2019. This permit was extended by vote of the board until June 20th, 2021. The delay in construction in 2021, there was a result of the death of our contractor slated for construction at the time. Mr. Peter Kaznet passed away in December of 2020. As a result, we've hired a new builder, and there's some been revised architecture, and we're back trying to get the project going. The only difference between the originally approved application and ours tonight is that back in 2019, we were proposing to keep the whole building, all 2,400 square feet, and now we're proposing to move those one-story appendages, which leaves only the main two-story timber frame section, which is approximately 1,300 square feet. So, we believe we've complied with all the requirements of the ordinance. The aerial imagery, I think, speaks volumes in for itself. That concludes my presentation, and myself and the team are happy to address any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
So, if the building dates back to the 1800s, does the septic system also date back to the 1800s?
No. No, the septic system was put in by the previous owner to the current owner.
So, 1998 to 2015, some, like...
Yeah, it was the late 90s when the septic system was put in, is my understanding.
Thank you.
I had a question on the, you mentioned the DADU will be served in the current, the current septic system?
It's currently connected to it, yes.
I was just curious in how the logistics of that would be when you, you're going to use the existing septic system, and then you're going to be providing a future sewer to serve the other house, and that will be connected to the new sewer at that time?
Yeah, yeah, shown on our site plans in the packets, we are connecting this DADU to the new sewer. And the only reason I raised it is it's currently connected to septic, it can exist that way, but we're proposing to remove that system and connect it to the sewer.
Okay, so would the intent be for someone to not live there until that new sewer gets built, or would it be to use it, you know, before that happens?
The intent is to probably not use it until the new sewer gets built. I would think that if we were to do so otherwise, permitting from DES would be required.
Right.
Even though it exists.
Logistically, I think it would be quite a task, so...
Yeah, agreed. The intent is connect to the sewer.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you, Chairman. I guess, you know, I was, I was here when we voted on this last time, and I know there was a lot of heartburn over the size of the ADAU at that time, and we were kind of led to believe that there was, because of the historic significance of the structure, even these additions, if you will, any change was going to be, you know, detrimental to the structure. So, was there additional surveys done of the structure to see if we could, you know, get rid of those additions? What changed that now allows us to remove those additions where in 2019 we could not?
Yeah, exactly. Further survey, we had a timber preservation company sets we got the permit in 2019, go in and assess the timber frame. And basically, it was his information to us that the only portion of the structure that's timber-framed and that's structurally sound is that main original structure, that two-story addition. We learned that all the other appendages, the one-story appendages, were stick-framed and not timber-framed.
Okay.
And that was by removing some walls, some floors, really digging into the structure. And so, we also believe, though we don't have photos to back it up, but we believe the main structure is what was built first and existed solely on its own, and those one-story appendages were added later, which makes sense with the, with the building construction type.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have just a quick one, Corey, based on, actually Ray's comment. I know you plan to come in with the big, the big plans soon, but is it fair to say that this application is intended to proceed so that even if something held that up, you would proceed with the renovation of this building and it would use the septic system while you're doing that renovation and using that building, not dependent on the future big house plan?
Yeah, no, good question. So, the plan is to, is to do some of this construction as soon as possible to this accessory dwelling unit. That construction, you know, we don't know how long it's going to take. It could take six, eight, 10 months. We're hopeful that by the time that construction is done, the sewer will be in place. However, if it's not, we do have the fallback position of utilizing the existing septic system that serves it today.
And you've examined that system and you feel it's adequate and functional and all that?
It's, I'll be honest with you, it's adequate. What we don't like about it and why we're proposing it in the next application to be removed is its close proximity to the Piscataqua River. It's not, you know, it, what it was, was a very old system originally placed there, and then when the former owner bought the property, he just kind of rebuilt in place in kind, and it's, it's very close to the water. So, we, we hope we never have to use it. We don't intend to use it, but the state would allow it if necessary, is what I'm trying to say.
Would you consider a time limit within which you would have to do something else, given that it's an older location that close to the river? Have you thought about that at all?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, a time limit to occupation?
You wouldn't use it, let's say the house got, the big house got delayed, and so it's five years now, and there's, you know, you've been using that old system, and that's all that's happening on the site. And what if the big house gets used as it is without any renovations, does it continue to use the same septic system? I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, no, no, good question. So, if the big house didn't get torn down and remained, and currently there's no one living in it, but was occupied again, and then the detached accessory dwelling unit got built and occupied, the sewer wouldn't be there, we'd have to rely on that existing septic system.
In the board's experience, has an accessory dwelling unit been used without the main house being used?
Ownership has been the only thing we've ever been truly concerned about, as long as that owner intends to occupy and not rent out that unit. They can only rent one of them, they have to live in one of them, that's the way it's written. So, I guess whether they're occupying it or not at the time isn't really a concern, they just can't rent it out.
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't really, okay. I'm good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I guess we'll open the public hearing. Anybody speaking too far against this application here or elsewhere on the big screen? Nobody on Zoom? Anybody in the room? Second round speakers, third round speakers, going fast. We'll close the public hearing. Board, open up the board conversation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to grant dimensional modifications as permitted by Section 10.814.53 of the zoning ordinance to allow a maximum of 1,300 square feet of gross floor area where 1,000 square feet is allowed.
Second.
And I guess, speaking on that, you know, this is better than what was in front of us in 2019, for sure. At that time, that was a really big reach. This is still a reach. You know, historically, this board has done everything in our power to try to keep those square footages within the footprint of the ADAU. And so, while this one is slightly larger, I think, I'm really happy to see that the applicant has really shrunk it down to the original footprint of the building, and given also the size of the lot, you know... also the size of the lot, you know, it is 12 acres, not just two acres or more. So, you know, I, I, you know, kind of how Counselor Moreau said it in 2019, it'd only be something approved, it's only something approvable on a 12-acre island, so.
Yes, Counselor Moreau.
I'll just add to that, that it's really the uniqueness of this property, so that other people don't get some idea, I've got 12 acres, I can get 1,300. This is unique that the protections that were put in place based off the size aren't really applicable because it's an island. It's far enough away from all its neighbors that it's not going to cause any issues. So that's, the uniqueness of the property is very specific.
Anybody else? I have, I think your motion was made in accordance with the findings. We, we've, we've reached all these same findings that were proposed, those are required of us, so, and those are in conformance with the idea that this is an island property, it's unique. It's also an existing building that was, been there a very long time and I think our, our ordinance was written contemplating new construction of, you know, adding a building to a lot that didn't have something before, so I think that also makes this unique. Some of us had the benefit of a site walk and, so we actually saw it and it, that was very helpful, so. Yes, Corey, you have something?
Nope, nope, sorry.
Sorry? Okay, we have a motion, second. Everybody good with that? We're ready.
Roll call?
Yep.
Mr. Hewitt?
I'm going abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
Chief Manager Connard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to find the remainder of Section 10.518.50 is satisfied by the application.
Second.
Just speaking on that, you know, I think, you know, we've, given the, the applicant's presentation, you know, everything else meets the criteria, appears to be, and so, yeah, we'll move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Roll call.
I think we're ready for another one.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
Chief Manager Connard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
And I will follow up, Mr. Chairman, that we vote to grant the conditional use permit with the following stipulations, 3.1 and 3.2.
Second, sorry. He was reading something. Distracted.
I think, yeah, just as stated before, you know, I think it doesn't meet the criteria and I do think, I think, you know, we had, I appreciate the chairman's discussion on the, on the septic and the holding tank and, you know, hopefully that, that all comes to together, you know, without any lag in time, so.
I guess the condition number two for no additional ADUs is consistent with the ordinance, so.
Great.
Yes.
I'd just like to add one point that, you know, that before they get a building permit, they do have to have approval, even if it's of the septic or holding tank or whatever it is, from the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. So there are protections in place to make sure that that's operational if it needs to go into use.
Yeah, I know, I just, I raised it as a topic of conversation because pre-existing conditions get treated differently than new construction and so sometimes you get to do things you might not otherwise do, that's all, so.
But I think their approval will be based off of it being used.
And I think the owners of this property look like they're proposing some extraordinarily significant investment in this property, so take that into account, too. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion.
So roll call on number three to grant the conditional use permit for the DADU. Mr. Hewitt?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bezulo?
Yes.
Chief Manager Connard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
How's everybody doing? Does anybody need a break?
I'm amazingly good, I usually am the one that has to go to bed.
Five minutes would be great, Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, I'm the one begging for a break. I guess I didn't drink enough today.
There's a puppy at home saying, "Hey, why don't you come in home?" We have, uh... Hey, everybody. We're back online.
Yay!
This is a better process, though.
Rolling right along here. Six A on our agenda. Request of Bailey J. Frederick III, owner for property at 21214 and 216 Woodbury Avenue, preliminary conceptual consultation for lot line revision, demolition of one structure, the construction of one eight-unit structure and two two-unit structures, one three-unit structure. Property is on assessors map 175 Lot 1, 175 Lot 2, and 175 Lot 3, and lies in the general residence, GRA District. Who is here to speak for this application?
Good evening. Mike Garapi with Garapi Planning Consultants. I'm here with Joe Coronati from Jones and Beach Engineers. And as required by your site plan regulations, when I believe there's any proposal for more than one dwelling on a structure, we are to come before this board for preliminary application. It's a good thing to do anyway, so we can get some feedback from you folks. We have recently put under contract the Bailey property. It consists of four parcels. We're actually just three are subject to our application before the board tonight. It's 212, 214, and 216 Woodbury Avenue, approximate to the Portsmouth traffic circle, if you folks are familiar with the location. It's right behind the Roundabout Diner, approximate. I don't know if there's an aerial that we can bring up of the site itself, but it's at the corner of Woodbury and Boyd. Our proposal is to the building, the existing dwelling at 212, the corner of Boyd and Woodbury, 212 is an older building in disrepair. It's unoccupied, and we're proposing to demolish that building as part of our proposal. The existing dwellings at 214 and 216 are proposed to stay as they exist today on slightly modified lots will create lots that are compliant with the zoning of the GRA zone, which is 7,500 square feet per lot. So we're going to propose to reduce those lots in size and create a condominium development of eight units, which is compliant with zoning as far as density goes in the GRA. And we'd be proposing a small private roadway that would be accessed off of Boyd, which we felt was the best place to come in from an access management standpoint, closing off the existing curb cut to 212 Woodbury. And we're proposing with the plan that you see before you, a three-unit, a triplex unit, a single-family, and two duplex units. That may change as we go through the TAC process and go through the planning board process ultimately, but that's what we are here tonight to discuss with you folks. There's, I guess, not much else to say at this point. We're here basically to get some feedback from you folks.
Do board members have any initial comments? Corey?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah. I guess, just so that, I just kind of wanted to throw this out there for the other board members who are new to this. This is, I don't want to put anybody on the spot or anything, but this is definitely the opportunity to speak up, for sure, when, because this applicant's going to have to come before us, you know, again. And this is kind of certainly the preliminary phase, so now's when, it's much easier to make changes now than further down the road. So anyways, one, a couple of questions I have. You know, you have the stormwater in the back corner of that site, assuming there's going to have to be some sort of discharge off that corner. Are you going to have to get any flow adjustments onto any of the abutters in order to discharge out of that area, or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, Joe may be able to speak to it better than I can with respect to stormwater, but as you're probably aware, this is very preliminary as far as where we put stormwater. We haven't done test pits on the property as of yet.
Okay.
Although we've evaluated the site, we think we have good soils for drainage. But Joe, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
Yes, Joe Coronati, Jones and Beach Engineers. The way the property slopes, where do I get this thing? Is it the middle button, the kind of the...
I think it's the little one.
The magnifier?
Yes.
I think it's the smaller of the two buttons on there.
All right, I'm not going to use that.
Kevin's coming up.
Yeah, we'd like to see.
He can show you.
Sorry. Not very helpful, though.
It's because we don't do that part.
Oh.
Oh, okay, there it goes. Thank you. So the way the site is sloped, basically everything sort of pitches down towards this corner today, and there's a little bit of a berm along this lot line over on this side, so it even directs the stormwater. And it all gets funneled down into this low spot existing. So we won't be able to increase that flow that's currently going there, but we can have an outfall if need be. And there's a, right in that location, there's some wooded area on the other side of the lot line, I mean, some brush area, and then there's parking lots, and the buildings are kind of gapped.
Okay.
So it's not right into the back of a building. And the building to the, I guess, the north side over here, this is sort of raised up from us also, so it's a, it'll, that'll definitely be the low spot, definitely the location for the stormwater.
Okay. Another comment I have is, is there any way to line up the driveway coming in with Manor Drive across the street? That way, you know, you don't have this offset, yeah, so, you know, if one's coming down Manor Drive, you know, I just think that would help with the traffic coming to and fro on the site.
Yes, we could, we'll certainly take a look at that. That could be a good goal. We haven't done the, or the field survey is ongoing. We don't have actual, this is really LiDAR mapping and preliminary mapping. So, once we get the survey work, we can, we'll know better where those drives really are, and we can, we can certainly take a harder look at that, try to get the angles, hopefully will work out. Manor's pretty, it's quite a bit closer to the intersection, but yeah, we'll look at that.
And then, my last question, is there, is there any way to possibly continue the sidewalk down Woodbury? Currently, it ends at the hotel. Is there any way we can bring that down, at least down to the intersection there?
Well, yes.
Okay.
That's the right answer.
I like it, I like it.
Always a way to bring a sidewalk in.
You're taking Dave DeFossis' comment. I mean, that's his, that's his purview. More than likely, there'll be a sidewalk extension, I would imagine, throughout the TAC process.
Okay, great.
Likes building them all over town.
That's right, that's right.
He's happy.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregg?
Quick question on the grapevine run coming in there. I know this is very preliminary.
We wore the same shirt on purpose.
Twins. It looks really tight from a driveway standpoint. Where are you going to put the snow?
Well, that's another Joe question. I'm just going to stick to that.
How about the snow?
Okay.
We're banking on global warming. No, we, there is space, there's the whole, you know, the side of, there's no development, obviously, for this whole length of the roadway, and then we have the area next to these two parking spaces. I think there's adequate, be adequate space for snow. It will be a condominium, you know, form of ownership. We'll have notes on there, you know, the area has to be trucked off, snow may have to be trucked off, you know, during heavy snowfalls like we might have Saturday, but it is, there is room. I mean, I think, I think there's going to be room, and we'll get more detailed with that with our landscaping, and we'll have to show snow storage for TAC review and...
Could you just, although it's super preliminary, could you just give like a brief narrative of the type of residence you see in this, this type of development? For sale for rent, long-term, short-term? I'm trying to conceptualize these types of housing units on this type of site, given the existing neighborhood and what else it looks at.
Sure, yeah. What, we haven't completed, we've started our architectural design work, because we do need to go to the zoning board first, actually before we even get to the TAC process. So they require renderings and floor plans and all that good stuff. So we will be, we're working on those now. We're assuming these are going to be somewhere in the 2,000-square-foot range for the dwelling size, finished, finished living space. Three-bedroom would be two-car garage, so that's sort of what we're targeting for a product for all of the units, similar to what exists on the site today. For, I think, the, the existing ranch is a two-car garage. The single-family is actually, has no garage. We may, we may consider adding a garage to that, but I don't know if that answers your question, but it'll be a for-sale product? I think you asked if it would be a rental or if it would be a for-sale. We'd be looking at a for-sale product here. We looked at, we did look at some other options for this site, given where it is, proximate to the circle and its surrounding uses. It would be a site that could potentially support more density, but we're looking to try to go through that zoning process and the planning process with as little variance requests as we possibly can for the site.
That's obviously the, the bigger picture type of proposal is, given the fact that you can, you have amassed a good chunk of land in an area that wouldn't be, I guess, as influenced as maybe other parts of Portsmouth to see different types of housing or more creative, efficient types of housing. That's the thought, but if it's truly, you know, your least path of resistance to go in and get these types of homes approved, then so be it. It is just a consideration, again, because you've amassed this land, and there are generally not a ton of workarounds and red tape between wetlands or topo issues, that type of thing. My big-picture consideration was, if you can create the density, it may be this attainable housing style where it may not be three bedrooms, but you now open up to a much wider spectrum of home buyer.
Sorry, you're talking about potentially having us seek a greater density with a different product? Is that what you're asking?
A different presentation of the same for-sale product. But merely a suggestion, just given the fact that you're already creating these tri-units or duplexes.
Sure. So at a greater density, is that what I'm hearing, or I just want to make sure I'm clear about what you're...
Yeah, and that's your appetite for proposals.
Sure.
And, again, that path of resistance, so that would be your discretion and the board's.
So, in an effort to go along with what Mr. Clark said in trying to possibly move the entrance closer to where Manor Drive is, I think it actually, in my mind, and you can check this out, I think it would make more sense if you did a duplex in the corner, you moved the road over, did a duplex with a single-family, so it kind of matches, so there's two-two, two-two versus the three. The three together just look really clumped together, and that's a really, truly sort of single-family-looking, mostly neighborhood, so, especially from the Woodbury Ave side, I think it might look better if you didn't have such a clump of ones in that specific spot and moved the road over a little, gave yourself a little bit more room there, maybe try fitting that in. I really hope that you'll make sure you reach out to, I think, the only other residential house that's actually on Boyd Road, to make sure that, you know, they're pulled into all of the things that you're planning, because it's always, we really like to see that there's residential buy-in.
Sure.
And that they're kept informed so that they know what's going on. You are going to be adding a lot more activity to this area, so also looking at how that's going to apply to traffic would be really important to us as well. And I think that's all for now.
Yeah, and to sort of get into that a little bit, when I, when I first started the presentation, this is the proposal that we're showing you, we had submitted, but we've already kind of made some design changes and are sort of advancing those as we get through with more survey data coming in. We're looking at making that triplex a duplex and a single or in some other configuration, so if lining up our new road with Manor makes some sense, and it probably does, you know, we can, we'll take that into consideration as we're designing these units. We do, I think I mentioned, tax map 175 Lot 13, it's six Boyd, that's also in our ownership as well. So we are working with them, obviously, as we go through our design. There's a few other residences across the street that we'll, we haven't spoken to yet, but we'll be making those outreaches as we normally do.
Great.
To our, to our neighbors.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments? Just to pick up on what Beth and Corey both said, I, I think you've got a little bit of a possible drainage issue at the corner, and I think if you flip that big building over, as Beth was saying, and slide the driveway down, that might help avoid a problem there. And I do think it's good that you internalize things with the proposed driveway. That's, that's certainly good for your internal circulation and traffic issues. So, thank you.
Great.
We have a 10 o'clock requirement to consider whether we split our agenda or continue to push through. I raise it for conversation. We have two items on the agenda tonight that are time-sensitive, because they have to be considered within a 30-day, 30 days of our December 30th meeting. So, we really should look at those at least.
I'm fine to move on. I don't know what other people feel, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to continue moving on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue pushing on. Is that where the board is?
So the two that you're saying, and then what else? How many are there?
We have one more preliminary conceptual and one design review, correct? And a couple of extensions.
And two extensions, which should be quick.
The design review could involve some conversation, but I'm good if the board is, I just want to raise it because we're supposed to talk about it.
I've been here till 1:00 in the morning before.
I know you have.
Let's press on.
That may not be a good thing.
I like to avoid that if I can.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second to continue pushing through, with that not split the agenda, continue with the agenda as it is.
Motion to split the agenda.
Correct. Do we have to take a vote?
Wait a second.
Once there's a motion, we have to actually take a vote.
I'm sorry, sorry.
We have a motion and a second to continue with our agenda as we have it before us. Any discussion on that?
I'd really like to split it.
First, we have to vote on that.
Are we all set with these gentlemen, or should we stay there?
We're actually the next agenda item, too, so.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to have interrupted you. We are, we are required to stop at 10 o'clock sharp.
Sure.
It doesn't take long, and we'll get right back to you, so. I guess there's no further discussion?
Well, I just have a question, which is, if we say we're going to continue, is there, there does, I'm not hearing any end time. Is there actually, actually a new end time that, like, I don't, I don't know if I do want to go on to 1:00 in the morning, sorry.
There could be another motion later to adjourn, but at the moment, if you vote on this, we're committing to try to getting through the entire agenda.
And it's just an open-ended timeframe?
Correct.
Okay, living dangerously.
Yep.
Okay, I think we are ready for a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hewitt?
Uh, no.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Brazula?
Yes.
City Manager Canard?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
We shall push on. So I'm sorry I interrupted you, I was required to do that. Did you have any, we had a good conversation going, I think, was the board finished with questions about the application we just were looking at? Okay.
The only thing I wanted to mention about that real quickly is, and we've submitted a letter, I believe, with the file, with the application, is that there was, on your GIS mapping, there's a wetland shown on your GIS mapping, proximate to where we're showing units five and six on our, on our plans. We've had our, our wetland scientists go out to the site and verify that there are no onsite wetlands, so it, you know, sometimes your GIS mapping is inaccurate, so we wanted to make sure that we feel verified that, and in the case, you know, someone's looking at your GIS maps and says, well, jeez, what's, what's this, you know, and why is, why isn't this shown on the plan? We wanted to make sure that you folks were all aware of that. And that letter is in the file. I think, Peter, you should have that. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, well, if you have a wetland scientist that certifies it, that's what it takes.
Yep.
I can just add that part of the site review process, there might be an independent review of that, just to confirm.
Sure, absolutely.
That would be, that would be at a later date.
Yep.
Thank you, Peter. So, we're on to 6B, I believe. Preliminary conceptual consultation for 635 Sagamore Development LLC. Preliminary conceptual consultation for the demolition of existing commercial structure on Lot 19, 635 695 Sagamore Avenue. Construction of five single-unit structures on Lot 19, construction of one single-unit structure on Lot 18. Property is on assessors map 222, 18, and 19, and is in the single residence, A District. Go ahead.
And it's me again, Mike Garapi from Garapi Planning Consultants, representing the applicant, 635 Sagamore Development LLC. And the address is the same as, obviously, as the, as the applicant, 635 Sagamore, and we're also working with a neighbor at 695 Sagamore to potentially do a merger of the two parcels and a redevelopment of both. If you're, you're hopefully all familiar with the site, it's the site known as the Luster King. It's a, we're actually calling it the Luster Cluster for now.
Come on, King Cluster.
We're going to come up with a better name than that at some point. So it's currently, and has historically been for years, an auto detailing shop, and there's also an existing garage in the rear of the property, or not the rear of the property, but behind the, the auto body, or the auto detailing that does some auto body and repair type work there. So, it's, it's located in the SRA zone, and it is non-conforming, the use is non-conforming. There's also an existing, an apartment above the commercial building in the front, so it's both commercial, automotive, and residential in nature today. It's in the SRA zone, as I mentioned, which is, I believe, a one-acre zone for residential. And so in order to achieve the desired goal, which is on the next sheet of the plan set, we are proposing to demolish the existing buildings on 635 Sagamore, maintain or retain the existing single-family home on 695, create a small subdivision private roadway, and locate a total of six new dwellings on the parcel. In order to do that, we'd need variance relief for density, which would be consistent with the, across the street from this site is all SRB zoning, which this would comply with. And it's, our property is adjacent to the TideWatch condominium development to, to the, the rear of our parcel, to the east of the parcel, and, excuse me, to the south of our parcel, and we'd be looking at a similar density to that, that development as well. So, so similar to what we just talked about on the last application, a similar type proposal with a short private roadway, and in this case, we'd be looking at all single-family homes for this location, but does require some density relief, which, the zoning, if we're able to achieve the variances that we'll be requesting, we'd be sort of, we'd be making the site more conforming in many aspects, and obviously, we'd be, but we'd be seeking some density relief. And that's the, really all I had to present for this one as well. No questions about drainage, though, Corey. Not yet, anyway.
I know you wanted to ask that, Corey.
Well, I do have a couple of questions. I guess, on that topic, there, there's essentially like a 12-foot grade difference between the driveway in the back, the, what I think the, the center of the most, furthest back unit. And so, not only from a stormwater aspect, but also a sewer aspect, how are you going to get your gravity up, or at least, maybe you're going to be doing force mains all the way back, I don't know. But I'm just curious to see how, not only, not only the utility aspect, but also how are these units going to appear to the abutters? If like, you know, if you're trying to get things to work, are they just going to right up, you know, behind the, from, from the abutters' point of view?
From the, from the TideWatch?
Yeah, correct.
Point of view? Well, we, we have designed these so they're sort of sitting up above, clearly, and we're sort of avoiding those slopes down below. As far as, as far as sewer, we have looked at sewer preliminarily, we're looking at, you know, hopefully being able to gravity, there may be a requirement that we have some grinder-pump systems for some of these units, and I think, Joe, we talked about that, some of those back units. How this, how these lots, we assume that these rear, the rear units, I think we're showing, showing them on the plan, is six, six and five, and probably three, would, would, would probably have a walkout type aspect to them. But how they're situated on the site, we have yet to sort of really kind of figure that out, what we're going to do for regrading and, and what have you on the site. That has sort of yet to be explored.
Right, right. I mean, earlier tonight, we were talking about building height, so I think that's, you know, the appearance is going to be kind of critical here, too, possibly the abutters, so.
It's a fairly, I mean, the, the site is in the rear of the property, beyond the existing buildings now. It's all, it's all treeed. So we'd maintain some buffer certainly around, you know, the perimeter of the site. Certainly, that doesn't, it's not going to mask the view completely, but it's going to provide some buffering. So we'll have to obviously consider that as we're going forward.
I'm sorry.
The very first unit that you have coming off of Sagamore Ave on the right, I'd really like you to consider facing, so at least the, what looks like the front of that house, and maybe a walkway down to the sidewalks that are going to be put in there, so that it looks like that house actually faces Sagamore. I don't mind that the entrance to like a garage or something be off of the private road, but I just think because all the other houses really face that road, it's going to look odd if we drive by and you see the side of a house and it doesn't look like it's the front of the house. So that would, the orientation of how that is designed would be important. And I would really want you to put in as much of a buffer with natural trees and whatever, what's there, or add to it to be able to buffer it from the other condominium units. I think that those will probably be extremely important to the neighbors that are there, who have been, you know, had this giant sort of forest behind them and now won't anymore, so.
Sure, sure.
And, and to Corey's point, because of the grade change, really take a hard look at the drainage and the runoff from this, because you don't want to cause any issues to the other existing houses that are there and have them end up starting to flood when these are all put into place. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I mean, I know this is preliminary. I'll just tell you that I really don't understand why you don't stay to the one to three dwellings per acre called for by the current zoning ordinance. I don't, like, why have more? Is more better?
More is better.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You know, we've, we've evaluated this site, in looking at the existing nonconformity. We've talked to several of the neighbors. In order to redevelop the site, we'd need more density. If we were just going to develop this site residentially today, we'd be allowed one unit. So there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of economic incentive to do any redevelopment of the site without some density relief. We're trying to be consistent with what the, the rest of the neighborhood is for density, where that, that, we're not looking for a reach of a tremendous density for the site beyond what the neighborhood currently is zoned for. There's only a few homes along this side of Sagamore Road that are, Sagamore Ave, that are zoned in the same fashion, SRA, and they're actually small lots. For the most part, they're smaller than the zoning would require. So we're just, we're trying to match the consistency of the, the zone right across the street from this parcel.
Thank you, but, thanks.
Okay, is Ray?
I just had a comment on the sewer. I, I think you might be aware, but there, there isn't any sewer in Sagamore Ave in front of this property. I think it ends at the, my information, it ends at the entrance to TideWatch, where they come in with a force main.
That's where the gravity, I believe, is, Joe.
Yeah, that's where the gravity ends.
Yeah.
But that's downhill of this site.
We didn't meet with Zach Cronin. We met with Zach, what, last couple of weeks ago? So you could probably speak more to that.
Did you, did you explore that?
This is part of that same, this is part of that same development that, same sewer expansion that's happening for Shaw Road. They're bringing up, there's two manholes, gravity manholes going to the top of the hill. And then that's the, the manholes that get tied into with the low distribution.
Okay, so.
Force main coming up off, off of Shaw.
Now, this is also a situation with a future, future sewer for the city.
Correct. Yeah, we actually end up with a manhole almost right in front of our proposed roadway that we'd be able to tie into.
So you plan using that, that, the pump station, E1 systems? Is that what you are?
Yeah, we were, we were looking at maybe the first couple of units could probably flow gravity, so we'd probably have a, a gravity line into the site, and then we could pump the, the back units into, into that line on our own property. So we would just need a stub from Sagamore once it's brought up there.
Okay, good. Okay, I guess that's, I guess that's it.
Thank you very much.
Do you have something else? Okay.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate your time.
I believe next is designer view consideration. Port Harbor.
This is just where we have to decide whether or not we can schedule it, right?
That is the next one. Yeah, at this point, this, this one is basically scheduling.
Right, so we just have to determine that we have enough information to review it and schedule it for a design review at our next scheduled meeting.
Right, I was, I was.
Yeah, this is the next one. Sorry, this is the next one.
So it's a request by Port Harbor LLC, Port Harbor Land LLC for property at 2 Russell Street. Along Russell Street and Deer Street. It's the site across from Sheraton, as you come into town. Requesting design review for mixed-use project for office, retail, commercial, and residential uses in one four-story and two five-story buildings between Russell, Deer Street, Maplewood, and the railroad corridor. Assessors map's 12412, 11828, 1194, and 12521. It's in the character CD5 district. Anyone here to speak to this application?
Good afternoon. Patrick Cummins with Time Bond. We're the civil engineer on the project. We're here this evening just seeking a vote from you folks to hold a design review hearing at the, the next public hearing. We don't have a presentation planned at this point. Usually during these, we don't even actually get up here to speak, so I'm just seeking a vote this evening to have the design review hearing next month.
Just giving you the opportunity.
Well, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we vote to put on our schedule for our next scheduled meeting, the design review of 2 Russell.
Second.
Would you like to speak to that, Counselor Moreau?
Uh, no, I think that we've already reviewed this in pre-conceptual design, and I think we can now take a deeper dive into it at design review and look at the additional information they provided us.
The only thing I'll add is by scheduling the design review, we are teeing it up to, at that meeting, set the zoning and lock in the zoning at that point. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. That's what design review does, yes. Soon as, because you have to have a public hearing for that portion.
Right. Any discussion about the motion? Big project. Lots to talk about, but not tonight. I guess we're ready for roll call.
So this would be devoted to scheduled design review for the February 17th planning board meeting. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bazula?
Yes.
City Manager Conard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you all. We look forward to presenting next month.
Thank you. We have city council referrals. 8A, application Randy Collins for restoration of involuntarily merged lots at 77 Meredith Way to their pre-merger status under the.
We postponed it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's all right. I've got two different, one with a check mark and one without. I'm looking at one without check mark, so. Help me out, Peter, which ones are?
So the next one is, there's two extensions. These are typically granted, they're part of the zoning ordinance to allow a one-year extension. One-year extension is generally automatic. The, it's the.
Second.
They can't go beyond that. If they can't get the one-year extension, they have to come and re-present as a whole new application. I mean, if they, after the first year. So it's, it's 9A.
London, London Bridge?
Joel Lazzadorian, London Bridge South Representative. We're just here looking for a one-year extension. Originally, this site was Zerofaklin Way granted to Raleigh Way Holdings. We purchased it, the property, November 17th of 2021. We've made considerable progress. We're about a week away from getting the bond.
Yeah, I heard you guys are really close.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's ready for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we grant the one-year extension.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Very excited to hear they're so close. Let's move on.
Roll call.
Yep. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bazula?
Yes.
City Manager Conard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
9B, similar Woodbury Avenue Cooperative.
Thank you.
1338 Woodbury Avenue, one-year extension. Is there anybody here that's anything about this one?
There usually isn't always somebody here.
They usually don't come.
Yeah, they usually don't come.
I'm just, I'm just giving them a chance, if they, okay, so.
Maybe it's about 50/50, I don't know. Unless.
Unless. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we grant this first one-year extension at 1338 Woodbury Avenue.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Pretty automatic.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, as a board, obviously required, but it is pretty standard. We'll give you at least that one year, and then you better come back with some really good explanation if you're going to ask for a second year.
Ready?
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Bazula?
Yes.
City Manager Conard?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Begala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Okay. They're unanimous.
Okay, we have two requests for rehearing. First being a request by Duncan McCallum for rehearing on 31 Raines Avenue, 203 Maplewood Avenue, and 1 Raines Avenue. I think this, I won't read the entire request. The city attorney is here. I don't know, did you, Bob, did you want to speak to this, or?
No, I'll let Matt be in on that.
Okay.
There's also a memo from the city, the.
I know the, the city, our new city planning director provided us with a memo. It was in a package. Hopefully, everybody's read that. There's also, I discussed this with the Hampshire Municipal Association. There is a relatively recent case in Nashua involving this, this topic. I will say that although there is no specific statute on it, the court has said that boards such as ours do have the right to reconsider something within a 30-day appeal period. That doesn't mean we should, doesn't mean we have to, we should reject out of hand. We can consider it if there is reason to consider it. If I'm speaking out of turn, city attorney, please tell me so, but that's my understanding of how, how it works. Nothing, no merits get discussed tonight in any case.
Yeah, we actually did, in the legal department, a substantial amount of work on these requests in conjunction with the new planning director in particular. And I think the statements that were just made by Chairman Chalmers are accurate. There is no law either compelling you to, well, there's no law compelling you to even consider requests for reconsideration over here, however you may do so. We found quite a split in law as to the way these cases have been handled in different places. And the principle that was just referenced is, is this. If a, a request for rehearing makes out an error, an error in an action of the planning board, then as a matter of policy, it is probably better if the planning board grants the rehearing and deals with the error itself rather than wait until some higher tribunal deals with it first. However, obviously, if you don't feel that the request for rehearing presents an error that needs to be considered, then there's no reason to do that. In the zoning context, where rehearings are actually, where you, where the zoning board is required to consider requests for rehearing, applicants are required to file them as a preliminary to any appeal. The, the statutory test in a zoning context is that you should grant the rehearing if you find it presents, quote, "good reason," end quote, for a rehearing. I think there's a logic to applying that same thinking at a planning board, even though there's no similar statute. You have much more discretion in how you handle these than a board of adjustment would. So going a little bit further, if you determine to have the rehearing, then you would set it for another evening. You would probably make that determination based solely upon reviewing the documents in front of you with no hearing or argument from anyone else. And then at, if you grant the rehearing, then on the evening that you set for the rehearing, you would allow any interested party to speak, to present evidence to you. And if you continue the parallel with the zoning boards of adjustment, then on a rehearing, you would have actually very large, very broad latitude to reconsider your, your prior actions. I think probably covers the ground.
Thank you. Question?
No, excuse me. Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
We had a few. I think Jane had her hand up first. Peter, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think what Attorney Sullivan stated related to evaluating these types of things that might, to prevent further movement into the courts is, is worth evaluating in the case of this. This is the one that was, happened in December, I believe, mid-December. Yeah, I, I feel it was, it was. There's some questionable things that hap, I, I, I wasn't really comfortable with how the vote went out on that, and I think there's more to consider. And I'd like to, that's, I think it's better for the city to have a rehearing and for the board to do that.
Yes, Counselor Moreau?
I would be against rehearing it. I think that this board did a good job and had looked at this multiple times at different stages. And I think that there was a lot of effort put into looking at it and for changes to be made and for it to come out with an approved vote. I just don't see any error in the board that we did that we could correct. So that's my opinion.
Corey?
Thank you, Chairman. I would agree with what Counselor Moreau just stated. Yeah, I would, I don't think that we should be considering the request. I mean, the way I look at it, this is already an avenue for, for others who wanted to appeal, you know, our decision. That's, you know, that's clear as day, how to do that. My concern is, you know, if we decide to move forward with this, then, you know, we could be, be getting rehearings all the time. You know, it's, it's, it's just another avenue for, you know, people who, you know, just for one reason or another, you know, disagree with the project and, and then, you know, put it back on us when, you know, I think we're all doing our, our job and. put it back on us when, you know, I think we're all doing our, our job, and I think, you know, we're reviewing everything as we should, and so, yeah, I don't think we should be considering it, because I, I think it's gonna set a precedent that, I don't, I don't know where that, that goes, and, you know, how does that, you know, what limits are, are there? I mean, there's no statute, there's nothing for us to go by as far as, you know, I mean, this could, it could, we could just be muddled up and, you know, two neighbors that just don't get along with each other, or something to that effect, that, you know, I, I do kind of worry where there is defined legal ways for, you know, people to, to appeal our decision. So with that, I'll be voting no.
Anybody else like to speak to the motion? Just Jane?
Yes. I, I feel like it's a policy area, area that the planning board needs to develop criteria for, but I don't think that that, you know, limits us from deciding to have a rehearing if we think that there's legal consequences. And I'm just concerned, from reading all of the, the paperwork involved with this, that, that we, that I think we could divert a legal action by having a simple rehearing, and par, parallel to that, talk in more depth in some fashion about criteria for applying this for the future to make sure to avoid what my colleague is saying about setting a precedent. So I would be in favor of rehearing.
Any other board members wish to speak? Greg?
I'm in favor of rehearing as well. I believe there were some procedural errors, and I think Attorney McCallum did a good job of outlining thirteen points, all of which seemed to have some validity.
I just wanna add, thank, I really appreciate how, what you're suggesting, Jane, and, and the importance, that supports it, and it, it makes a lot of sense what you're, how you worded that.
Councilor Moreau?
I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Without proper rules and procedures regarding rehearings for this board, are we putting ourselves at any liability to grant one without that in place?
If by liability do you mean, is there any monetary risk? I feel there's no monetary risk. There is, however, the risk that you would be overturned in whatever decision you make.
Thank you.
While I'm here, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, please.
It is the recommendation of both the planning department and the legal department that the, the planning board consider adopting rule or regulation as to how you would like to deal with requests for rehearing in the future. We think that you have pretty broad latitude to make your own determination as to what your policy will be, and there are arguments, pretty good arguments, for really both sides, so something for you to think about.
Corey, did you have, you have your hand up, or?
Yeah, I guess my, I guess my comment would be is, if we were to vote to grant consideration without having any of those, like, I guess I'm, I'm curious, how, how is this going to, to happen with no rules or procedures in place? I mean, what's the limits on the public hearing, all that's, I guess, I'm, I'm curious. I understand, you know, if, if this is something the board wants to consider, then I certainly am in agreement, we need to develop the procedures, but without having the procedures, how do we even conduct these rehearings at this point in time? I don't, I guess, I, I don't even know, like, yeah, how, how it would, I don't know how it would work at all.
Well, from my reading, and please jump in, but from my reading, the board actually has the right of its own volition to have a rehearing. If, if something came to the board's attention following a meeting, and it was within a thirty-day appeal period, the board of its own volition, without an outside input, could just call for a rehearing. So that's one thing. And by the way, I do agree we should have separate rules about this, and I'm completely in agreement with the city attorney on that topic. I think, from what I've read, if we grant a rehearing, we're not saying that we've granted the basis for overturning a decision, we've granted a new hearing. That's all we've granted, based on information that's before us tonight. It's based on the applicant, the information that was submitted. So if you found something that was absolutely nothing new to, in your brain, that, you know, based on those members who were here last month, that's one set of criteria. For the new members, if they found something that they didn't see in the record, that would be new information, and that could be the reason for the consideration of, you know, a rehearing, which would create a, basically a new review, I, I believe. I believe that's what would ultimately happen, because now you're having input from the applicant, input from the people opposing that, and the public, it's a public hearing. So is that, is that fair, city attorney?
Yes, and until the law becomes more clear, and of course, it might become more clear as a result of whatever decision you make, but until the law gets clarified by either the legislature or the courts, the only real guidance sort of available to you is by comparison of a, to the process which is followed in the zoning context, where rehearings are a regular part of the process. The, and, as I said, what that would mean, if you wanted to follow the zoning board-type process, you would look at the document you have in front of you with nothing else, no other input, and you would determine whether or not that document presented good reason to have a rehearing. If you chose to hold a rehearing using that test, you would be where Chairman Chalmers said, just bringing the matter back in front of you, not necessarily overruling your earlier action, just bringing it back in front of you. And when you bring it back in front of you, that's the rehearing, and at the rehearing, you can, you would expect to hear arguments, at the least, perhaps new evidence. If you're operating in a parallel fashion to the zoning context, you would actually have quite broad latitude in terms of the issues that you could consider and the decisions you could make. You would make them after you'd heard the arguments and heard the evidence at the rehearing. At that time, you would be free, if you chose, to go back to your initial decision and make no changes whatsoever, or, if you chose, you would be able to change your decision. And that's, that's the situation.
And can I just ask you one additional question, which is about the timeframe? Because if we are supposed to be within thirty days of that original decision, is it true that that was December sixteenth? So are, we're outside of the thirty-day timeframe?
If you were gonna operate in a parallel fashion to the zoning board, it would be within the thirty days.
That concerns me.
I think we're within the thirty days. Is that?
That's my question. Are we, that's my question. Are we in or out of the thirty days?
Well, I have not.
Beverly's coming in. The decision was made in December thirtieth.
Oh, December thirtieth? Then we are in it, okay. I thought it was December sixteen.
Yeah, December, approved December thirtieth.
It was the, we split the agenda the sixteenth because it was so large, and it was one of the cases that was moved to December thirtieth agenda.
Thank you. So I guess we are inside the thirty days, okay. I just wanna make sure that was actually true. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Moreau?
Um, my biggest concern about granting this is that they're not using the proper, which is if there was an issue with our decision, it should, I believe, especially against the zoning, go to the zoning Board of Adjustment for appeal, and I just, because that mechanism is already there to go to a board for review, I, I just think the, the planning board looks like they don't know how to do their job when they're, without rules and regulations, just accepting rehearings. That's, that would be a concern of mine.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I just, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, you could, you may, you know, I'm not hearing, you shall, and I guess that's where I'm kinda, you know, it, everything that we do is pretty well spelled out and what we can review and not, and I, I, I just would have a tough time, you know, I don't even know, I, I, I'm just not even clear what the, you know, if we had a rehear, rehearing, what would even the motion be? You know, and I don't think staff would be able to provide any sort of recommendation as to, you know, what, because there's no, so, I guess I'm just struggling with, not so much the, you know, the, the, the actual request, it's, it's more the request before having rules and procedures in place.
If I could maybe help with that, on this application, one of the things raised is under the conditional use permit, which, as we know, is basically a special exception that is considered by this board, as opposed to being a special exception considered by the Board of Adjustment. And one of the problems, and I think one of the reasons the legislature is behind on this topic, is because conditional use permits are a relatively new thing under innovative land use controls. And right now, when we make a decision on this, as we well know, the only appeal is to court or the Housing Appeals Board, if you, if there's a housing component involved in it. So the courts, in the decisions, have talked about giving the local board first opportunity to consider, just in case a mistake or some new information has come before you, within thirty days, to reconsider it in a much more expeditious manner than a full appeal to either the Housing Appeals Board or the court, which takes a great, a great long time. So that's, that's one type of rehearing. The other one is, as the city attorney mentioned, if, if an error came to our attention, which that could happen based on a staff review following a meeting, you know, they might say, oh, we missed this on, you know, it, it can happen to any of us. In terms of how the motion would be worded, I think the motion would be just simple to either grant the rehearing or not grant the rehearing. That's it, and then it gets scheduled or doesn't. I don't know if that helps. Probably not, but.
Yeah. It'd be nice to have, you know, just a concrete playbook to go by, so.
We may be creating a bit of a playbook here. I, I'm not a big believer in setting precedent, because there's so much difference about every application, and I think the two requests tonight are even very different, so, you know, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Board wish to discuss this further? I don't wanna stop anybody if anybody wants to speak up.
I'd just like to say that I agree that the two requests for rehearing seem very different to me in, in my reading and study of it, and when I apply the principle of, you know, is the, does it seem like the request for a rehearing is lawful, reasonable? In this case, because of the questions about legality that are raised from the materials that I've read, I really think that we should be rehearing this.
Is the board ready for a vote on this topic?
Was Mr. Hewitt trying to say something?
Mr. Hewitt, you trying to say, do you wish to speak, Jim?
No, I'm not, I don't have my hand up.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanna make sure.
Yep. I think we're ready for a roll call.
So this is the vote to, request for rehearing, item C in section nine. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
I'm gonna wait until the end of the vote for his chair.
Mr. Pizzullo?
Uh, no.
City Manager Connors?
No.
Councilor Moreau?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
And Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
So that's five yeses and four no's, so the motion carries.
We have another similar request for ninety-nine Bow Street by Katie Sherman.
Well, was that for C and D, or just for C?
It's just for C, there's a, that was the.
There's a second rehearing under D for the same property.
Yep.
Well, there I go again, jumping ahead on my iPad, sorry. So we'd granted the request for rehearing on, uh.
C.
C, similar on D. Is there a motion? Mr. Harris?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for rehearing, on the same criteria as.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Discussion?
I think all the same things I've said previously apply to this as well.
Same. Just, um.
All the same. Any, anybody wish to add anything?
Want me to go last with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo?
No.
City Manager Connors?
No.
Councilor Moreau?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Ms. Pagala?
Yes.
Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
And Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Same vote. Four, motion carries.
Now we have reached E, the request of Katie Sherman for rehearing ninety-nine Bow Street. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Would you like to speak to that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, this case, I think, was thoroughly looked at, and all the points brought up, really don't have a whole lot of merit. It was mostly about the trash, which we came up with a solution. They need to actually report that as being a violation of their current approval, and have, let the health officer go investigate that, and go, that get fixed under the current one. They, the other portion, they had actually changed the deck and made it smaller to get out of needing any approvals from the neighbors, so I feel like our approval is completely within our realm, and we did not make any mistakes whatsoever, or be against the law in any way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. I would agree with what Councilor Moreau just said, but I, you know, I, this is where I'm kinda getting into, you know, the previous one, item C was for a conditional use, you know, it stated the conditional use permit, of the, the parking variant, or not variance, but parking, and then the D was for the wetland conditional use permit. Now, this one is just a rehearing request. You know, we didn't have a conditional use permit on this one, so that's where, you know, I'm already kinda running into, you know, are we just looking at conditional use permits, or are we looking at site plan approval, like, you know?
Subdivision.
Yeah, I guess, that's, you know, I'm kinda already running into, where does this, this snowball end? Because, you know, this is not, like you stated, Chairman, you know, there is no way for the, the BOA to review conditional use, where this, you know, it's just out there. So I guess, this is where I'd like to have the, you know, the rules and procedures in place, not only for us, but also for people looking to, you know, to appeal, because, you know, this is where, you know, I just, I struggle with how we're gonna move forward with these, so, thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate your comment. As I mentioned, a conditional use permit, by affording the opportunity to come back here, at least you have the opportunity to ask. That doesn't mean you're gonna get granted that, but you have the opportunity to ask it, short of going to court or to the Housing Board of Appeals. I think, as I understand it, you can, an applicant, or a butter, or an agreed party could ask for a rehearing for anything this board does, but that doesn't mean anything this board does has to be reheard. So, you know, it's, 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 it's based on the merits of what we're, what was submitted to, to us for this evening, that's it. You know, I, that's the way I understand it works.
Chairman?
I'd just like to say, piggybacking on Ms. Moreau's comments, actually, but applying my same criteria about, is it reasonable, is it, is it legal, is it a legal issue? On those, on that basis, I would vote to not grant a rehearing on this. I, I don't think it meets either one of those, like, very preliminary criteria that are just my own. So I, I think we actually can sort through requests for rehearing. I think we should codify it for the future, but this is before us now, so my vote is gonna definitely be to deny this rehearing.
Any other? Peter?
Just reinforce, thank you, Jane. We've, based on the information provided to us, that's how we're making that decision. It's not how we, what, what happened before, it's with the additional information evaluating it, and I agree on, with you on, on this. And I agree on, on, with you on, on this, and, and with Councilor Moreau and Corey. I think there's a diff, that, that helps understand, like, what the difference is between this and the prior two, with the information that was provided.
Anything else? Are we ready for a vote?
Mr. Chairman, this is-
We're not, we're not ready for a-
Could you confirm what the motion is again, please?
Yeah, that's what-
It was a motion to deny the request.
I was going to repeat it, yeah.
Yeah. Happy to repeat that.
So a yes vote, so a yes vote.
Denies it. A yes vote denies it.
Denies the application.
Opposite than the last time.
Correct.
Is everybody clear on what the motion is? Ready for a vote? Roll call.
Okay. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzullo?
Yes.
City Manager Connar?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Begala?
Ms. Begala, yes.
Getting late, getting late, sorry. Mr. Mahana?
Yes.
Mr. Chalmers?
Yeah, I'll certainly-
I voted already, yes.
Did I ask you?
I'll vote again if you want.
We need to put Peter to bed. If, if I'm allowed, I'd make a motion that we adjourn, unless there's something else.
Second.
I, I did want to have one quick thing, I think, I, and Beth, you and I talked about this briefly, I think we, as a board, we should have a conversation about regulations and our ordinances and things with staff that isn't a night when we have so many applications and things to talk about. I don't want to overburden everybody. I know we're all here as volunteers, but I think it'd be nice to sit around a table in the same level and just have a chat about that sort of thing, and perhaps involve this gentleman sitting in the room.
You can certainly schedule a work session to do that.
That's what I'm talking about, so.
I second that.
You don't have to second it, I just wanted to mention-
We just put the request in.
I support it, whatever you want to call it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, so all those, are we even, a roll call?
You could just, you can call it adjourned.
You can call it.
Meeting is adjourned.
You can call it adjourned.
That's efficient.